Recording in progress.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting over at seven oh one, we're in the city council chambers. Uh, Yvonne, can you call roll?
Yes. George.
Present.
Akka. Buckles.
Present.
Backalory.
Here.
Heber.
Here.
Hodges.
Present.
Houston.
Present.
He's influencing the council already.
So something.
Alright, let's go ahead and write, um, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so additions and deletions, we're gonna, um, remove, um, the, the food bank grant, um, from presentation. And, I think that's it. That, alright, okay. Okay, so then we'll move on to the first public comment period, and I'll go ahead and read this whole thing. Uh, the public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. The public is allowed three minutes to present information relevant to the city. Topic issue brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note completes should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and or the city manager prior to directly addressing the council. Alright, first we have, uh, Tara Summers. Yeah.
My name is Tara Summers, I'm here to talk about dangerous and dilapidated barn that's been encroaching on my property. Specifically, I want to address municipal code fifteen twenty-one second point zero five zero. The code specifically addresses buildings that are dangerous and dilapidated where deterioration causes inadequacy of its foundation and any other cause that is likely to partially or completely collapse. Um, that's it, it's such an A, or A over eight letters, A, D, and E. In twenty twenty-three, I did submit some information, several photos of the barn showing its deterioration and collapse, um, to share the planning and code enforcement, and didn't receive any response. To start the story, in December two, uh, nineteen ninety-three, my parcel was one of two being petitioned into two lots. The second lot was sold to my realtor's husband as a fly lot in June of ninety-four. Uh, the county and city manager at the time approved the petition with the caveat that the barn be removed in many years' time. The city didn't follow up on the approval conditions, nor did the new owners. In twenty twelve, my spouse and I worked with local realtor Lucy Heber and the previous owner Denise came to purchase our home at six thirty-five Northeast Hill Street. We entered a real estate sale agreement contract with lease option. As the home wouldn't meet traditional financing guidelines until we did some remodeling, which was completed in twenty twenty. We made it, we paid it off at that time, Lucy represented both of us in that tra- transaction. After moving in in April of twenty twelve, I ordered a survey to locate the monuments. Survey revealed that the barn was encroaching on the property, I talked to Lucy and suggested that the barn was grandfathered in and didn't need to be moved. I mentioned at that time that the foundation was cracking, the wall was separated from the foundation. In August twenty twenty, we paid off the lease auction and purchased the home, and we got title report that referenced the original survey stating, "Barn as shown in this drawing must be removed," I do have that if you'd like a copy. When I did pointed this out, Lucy's response again was, "The barn is grandfathered in." I reminded her that the wall, barn was falling apart, asked her to remove it before it falls causing damage to my property, any damage to my animals. Over the past twelve years, I've made several attempts to work with Lucy as a property owner. I've contacted Jim Jackson, Laura Conbrine as city officials. Let's just fast forward today, regardless of the encroachment issue, the building is dangerous and is collapsing. There's chunk, a large chunk of foundation that's completely separated from the building laying on my property. I have to block my side of the barn to keep my pets safe from going in and out of it. I'd love to take you for a field trip if you're up for it, but, uh, photos just don't do the justice, there's asbestos ivan stuffing off. I got one paragraph.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say my question is, ultimately, who's going to take responsibility for the asbestos, the paint, the rusty nails, the wood, the metal endangering my pets, my belongings? Is it gonna be the city, Lucy, or me, because it's a civil matter? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next we have, uh, Kim Green.
And Kim Green has asked me to read this on her behalf, so, yeah, do you mind if you could just scoot your microphone up a little bit? Thank you. Okay, um, Kim Green writes, "The city owns a forty-foot unimproved right-of-way called Skyline Drive at the top of Northeast Hill Street, running west to east and below and adjacent to my three-point-five-acre listing owned by the Wears. Historically speaking, this is how the drainage served the water in the past. The Ware property has a long natural drainage ditch running north to south and connecting to a culvert pipe that flows under Skyline Drive. From there, the water flowed east toward another large natural drainage ditch that also collected water from the two hillsides directly to the north and to the east, then routed through a culvert pipe under the adjacent property and into an open ditch flowing through the next several property owners' backyards toward unimproved Blair Street. In twenty twenty, that drainage was modified by the neighbor at eight twenty-two Hill, whose property borders Skyline Drive. This neighbor subsequently filled in the natural ditch that was located on the city's right-of-way and attached a non-perforated corrugated pipe to the culvert pipe at the point of its exit on the southeast side of Skyline Drive, then eventually to the city's natural drainage ditch. The pipe then runs south onto the neighboring property, six thirty-five Hill, extending approximately ten feet beyond the property line. The pipe was installed with no authorization given by the homeowner or the city. During that winter, the two properties below, six thirty-five and six fifteen, completely flooded, washing out ditches, berms, a shop, and much more, and much more costing the property owners thousands of dollars to temporarily band-aid their properties. In the spring of twenty twenty-one, six thirty-five Hill had to hire a contractor to have the debris removed and the drainage partially restored from the previous winter's water disaster. The owner of eight twenty-two Hill then proceeded to fill in the natural ditches and catch basins above Skyline Drive with dirt, yard debris, silt, and old trees. None of this work was completed with engineering permit or from the city since it was on their property. The city and Public Works were notified with no response except for one email saying it was a civil matter. Out of the blue in twenty twenty-one, Public Works showed up with a contractor, a huge concrete catch basin, and a drainage rock. A wide ditch was installed to the new catch basin adjacent to the Ware's three-point-five acres along great drainage for that parcel, but not any of the three hillsides. My question is, where does the water go from there? No one seems to know exactly. The city paid the contractor five thousand dollars for the work performed. Unfortunately, it did absolutely nothing to stop the waters from flooding again in twenty-two and twenty-three, since it was installed above the wa- areas where the flooding took place. Another question, who asked for that work to be performed? The city had no record of it until I tracked down the contractor and got a copy of the invoice. After the city work was completed, another attempt to clear up the drainage issue, a second pipe was installed by the owner at eight twenty-two Hill and connected to the new concrete catch basin, placed a new ditch, and again trespassing and dumping that water from now three hillsides onto six thirty-five and six fifteen Hill. She has two more paragraphs here, do you want me to continue, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. The work installing the pipes filling in important drainage ditches performed by the property owner, the family and that same contractor was not engineered, permitted, or approved by the city, even though it was on the city's property. The flooding has happened every year since, the neighbors wanted to let you know that something needs to be done and not ignored. When I approached the city attorney, he asked me what I'd like to see happen, and I said personally the right thing to do would be to put it back to the way it was, holding this person accountable for their actions, given their occupation and standing in our community. They should be held to a higher standard. I have changed my mind, from this point forward, the right thing to do would be to put the drainage downhill street where it should have been years ago. I ask that this matter be put on the next meeting's agenda for a solution.
Alright, thank you. Okay, um, next we don't have the appearance, so next we have Diane Reynolds, founder and president of Provoking Hope, and she's on to.
Hi Diane.
You're still muted.
Take your cell phone, please.
Thank you. So I am here to, uh, present to the council, to the full council, a little bit about Provoking Hope, which has been operating in Sheridan now since June. And, um, I don't know if I am going to necessarily be answering questions or, um, exactly what, but, uh, Provoking Hope has been operating in our county, uh, for fifteen years now, October is the fifteenth years. And it is a recovery support reference services organization, a nonprofit. And, um, we work with people across all, um, areas of social help, uh, things like lunches, um, birth certificates, social security cards, uh, ID, if, if the need is to have ID, to help people who are houseless, to try to get into some sort of a housing situation, to recover if they have addiction or dysfunctionality in their life or in their families. And dysfunctionality isn't always driven by addiction or alcoholism. Uh, sometimes it's just what happens when individuals lose jobs and, um, children misbehave or whatever, you know, whatever it is that causes the family to go kind of lopsided. So we have been at, um, six forty-five Main Street, uh, now, going into our second full total month, and, um, I, I don't know what else I need to say, I, I, you know, we have four focuses. One is prevention, so education and helping people understand the difference between what does recovery look like, what does treatment look like, and recovery can't, is not, again, it's not only about, recovery from drugs or alcohol, sometimes we need to recover from life. Sometimes we need to recover from, um, losses, sometimes we need to recover from divorce, sometimes family separation. So all of those aspects are services that we wrap around people uh, who are seeking or needing assistance to walk. At this current date, we have about sixty-seven certified recovery mentors that we have hired. Uh, most of them work in the McMinnville area. But Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from nine o'clock until about three-thirty on rotation, we have a team of two, two certified recovery mentors, an administration person and a manager who are in the location at, um, on Main Street, there to provide services across all of those aspects of service provision. Uh, we don't charge any, we don't charge the clients. We don't, uh, they come in, they can come and just be there to feel like they're a part of a community, or they can come and actually do one-on-one encounters with our certified recovery mentors who can then help them push through the barriers that, whatever the barriers are that they're facing in their life. And, um, I think that pretty well does it, we have an amazing family program that we're working on trying to get started and out into the Sheridan area sometime right after school starts, at two different locations, that, that won't happen at the uh, location on Main Street instead of two of the churches there in Sheridan have offered a space, so we'll have one night where moms will meet and the children will go to the other church, the moms will be in one church, the children in another church. That program has su- certified, um, people who work with the moms another day of the week, gonna be the dads, and the dads will do the same thing, they'll come to one of the locations and the children will go to the other location, and the children go through what we call a support program, so they're in there divided by their ages and their grades. And they're learning things about their, you know, their part that they need support from, uh, being a part of either a dysfunctional home, or a home that has only a single parent, or a home where there has been trauma or grief or loss inside the home that has had an affect on the child. So, those are kind of the services that we offer, and, um, we'll walk with people until they feel like they don't want us to walk with them anymore, walk with them side by side.
So you, you mentioned the, the program, um, you mentioned what the, the kids are doing, but what are the adults doing?
They're, it's a support group, so they're working through modules, they have, um, we, we've purchased four different, um, module types, and each module has four modules. So they work through module one, they get a, they graduate from that, they go into module two, they go into module three, go into module four, they're finished with that, then they go into the next, uh, study, and it's just, it really is an educational process for the parents, and it's a support group, so they, everybody who's there with, um, them is somebody who is walking through some sort of a life-altering situation, whether that's, um, drug addiction, or maybe separation from somebody who had the addiction, or loss of, um, a significant job, or a home, or, um, or you know, in, in, any way that you can think of to define what it feels like to suffer a loss. And sometimes the loss is the fam- infrastructure, the home, the house, the job, the loss of a life. And those things, they meet with other males or females depending on, um, how they identify, and we walk with them through their support, and they get educated on what the things are that they're feeling, the understanding that there are many people who have walked those same pathways. And the really cool thing is that those sixty-seven employees, every single one of them are in significant years of recovery in their own lives. So they know what the barriers are, they know what the hard feelings are, they, they've experienced that path, and they have pushed those barriers aside and have walked out of the air, the, whatever that was, whatever the trauma was, whatever the dysfunction was, they walked, they pushed through those barriers and are living a very successful life, uh, today. And that's what they get to share with them, is their lived experience. So, you know, i- if you're familiar, if anybody is familiar with N A and A A, it's a little bit like that except that this is actually not N A or A A. It is, uh, looking at behaviors and how, why am I act, why do I do this, when I wanna do that, you know, those kind of things. And being able to discuss that, kind of, and talk about it, and just kind of get, get it out of the closet and say, you know, this is what I feel today. And then somebody sitting there will be able to say, "Yeah, I remember that, I feel, I, 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 I know that feeling. Here's what was worse for me." And they're facilitated, so there's, um, seasoned facilitators who are guiding those support groups.
So what other, uh, what other locations do you have? Sounds like the main one is in McMinnville, do you have any other locations besides McMinnville and Sheridan?
Uh, no, we have, actually, we have, uh, four locations in McMinnville. Uh, we have a, a, a building that's totally for the family program. Uh, we have our administrative and data entry because we collect statistics so that we can help our state be able to better understand, um, and so all of that's digitized, so we have a staff of data entry individuals. Of course, we have a small marketing team, and we have an executive team, so those guys are all in another building, and then Tenth and Baker in McMinnville is four buildings, and they are full, those buildings are full. At that location, we see just shy of a thousand people a month from our county. And so our count, you know, we are focused on Yakhill County and meeting the needs of our community here in Yakhill County. Uh, and we, I personally have always had a heart for Sheridan, and I don't know that I totally understand that, and I don't even try to challenge it, I just know that it's a long way, when you need something, it's a long way to drive all the way to McMinnville, and sometimes you don't even have an automobile to do the drive. And so we wanted to be out in the West Valley, in the Sheridan area for a very long time, and we're very grateful to be out there. And we are seeing, we are seeing people on those three days a week, and our goal is to expand that to five days a week, and maybe even expand the hours, right now it's nine to three. And we have about twenty-five on average, twenty-five people who are coming in. Out of that twenty-five, eighteen of them are seeing a certified recovery mentor with uh, a one-on, what we call a one-on-one encounter, where they work with that individual person uh, to assist them in whatever ways they need assistance. So we're, you know, we're looking at what are their needs, let's meet their basic needs first. And then, let's talk about behaviors and, you know, support some of that stuff, maybe get them into the moms or the dads program, or into a codependency group that they can flourish and become successful. And, um, yeah, so it's about twenty-five people, seven of them are just people who are coming in, sitting in the lobby, maybe eating lunch, having a cup of coffee, or some cold water, but it's really hot, and chatting and sharing and just being present. And then we have about eighteen, right now, eighteen, who are in re, what we call a reoccurring appointment with a certified recovery person.
So the, uh, when you talk about services, um, does Provoking Hope, do they provide transportation as well, to like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, like if they need to, if they needed to go into talk with an attorney, or if they needed to go to a medical, like, in, in the McMinnville area, or if they needed to be transported to some sort of a court hearing, or uh, so we're, we're transporting people all the time, if they're, if it's, you know, an addiction, or they need detox, we transport people all the way over to Baker City in order for them to get there, whatever that need is, sometimes Baker City is the closest place that hasn't been opened. And, um, what they need is that, you know, so that they can get their self-grounded and get their feet back underneath them. And we will take them over there, and we will go pick them back up when they're finished over in Baker City.
If that was still my question, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, I don't see you're on Main Street, but I, I can't, I don't know where you're at on Main Street.
Oh, uh, six four five, I believe is the address. It's where the, there used to be a, uh, aeropactor in there, I think. Yeah, West Main, it, it is West Main, sorry about that.
Liz, go ahead.
Um, I just needed some clarification, you started to say that you were gonna talk about the four main tenants of, of Provoking Hope, and you said prevention, is it prevention, education, recovery?
Intervention, reduction, and recovery.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So prevention, you know, that's educating, and just getting the word out, so everybody kind of understands, you know, how, how, there is, prevention is the key. And then, sometimes there has to be an intervention, uh, and sometimes there has to be a reduction, so we have to reduce the harm in their lives so that they can get a clear mind and be able to choose of their own will, will, uh, out of their own will, choose the path that they want to walk, because we can't tell them what to do, they have to want to do it. And so, that usually happens, and sometimes we have to do a reduction, meaning that they're gonna get medical assisted treatment, or they're gonna get mental health on board. Uh, and, you know, we collaborate with all the service providers in, uh, both hospitals, all those law enforcement in our county, with all of our health and human services, um, child welfare department, th- those are all our partners. At, at the drug court system inside the county, uh, court system.
The, um, the eighteen, uh, people coming in for services, were they, are those brand new to Provoking Hope, or were they going like to McMinnville, or, or?
Half and half, approximately, so there have been, you know, like, so if we have eighteen, I would say probably, you know, seven of them maybe are people who can now walk to get their services, which we are so excited about, you know, they are just right there. And they don't miss appointments anymore, they get their needs met by being able to get there easily. And even in that, if there are things that they need to do, let's say they come in and they need to go grocery shopping, or they need to, you know, go to, I don't know, do their, do their laundry done, we will do that transport for them. If they come into the Sheridan office and they have an appointment in McMinnville or over in Newburgh, we can transport them if they don't have transportation.
Alright, thank you Diane.
Thank you Diane, you're very welcome, thank you guys, and I'm gonna take off because the rest of it's.
Alright, so, we're on to the consent agenda, the city council meeting minutes and the voucher directory, if somebody wants to, we can approve them both. If somebody wants to, we can approve them both. Say, just one last question.
Um, I've got some questions about, um, consent agenda, some of the financials too. Is it something we can, um, straighten out and approve at another meeting?
Yeah, is that a problem?
Of course.
We don't have to approve it right now?
Well, we do wait to send out all the bills.
The checks, yeah.
The checks for people to get paid.
I don't think I've had any on the consent agenda.
How to present or this, my questions were mostly on the financials. Like right when they are sheets of stuff.
The financials?
Yes, okay, so the checks that are on pages, we'll get them. Are they getting there? Pages, looks like ten, right? Yeah, they're, they're. A bunch of reports, yeah.
You hear Jim, go ahead, Jim, go ahead.
If we have, we need a moment to, uh, ask the issue, we discussed it first.
Uh, you discuss it.
Okay, um, on page eight of three hundred forty-two, the council minutes of, uh, fifth of August. We had our legislative priorities discussion and we reviewed a list of priorities. However, what got put in the minutes are the things that we didn't want to consider. I would suggest that to allow everyone to see what we're doing, updating that, to put in the things that we are considering. At least, because we did vote on what we wanted to consider. So I think they should be represented in the minutes versus the thing we didn't want to just go backwards.
Well, what you voted was what you wanted to eliminate. And so I went through that list and crossed off everything that you did not want.
Yeah, the city council eliminated the following.
And so that's why it ended up that, that way. And then everything that's left is what you were going to be coming in here tonight to consider.
Would it, would, would you prefer it underneath that?
Yeah, I think it, you know, people need to know what we decided to consider versus just what we didn't.
So maybe underneath that, the council will consider and then the list of what we're going to do. Also, on the top of page nine, um, it says Councilor Eber.
Oh, spell check doesn't catch those, that's.
American Mark, instead of market, on page nine. Um, page nine, title, American Mark, fourth.
Oh, oh, you gotcha.
I got it.
Um.
Any other handles? Okay, all right, go ahead, Liz.
So are we, are we discussing some of these things or shall I wait till the end for it all to preserve? I mean.
Well, if it's regarding.
I have a question about the West Coast Solar presentation.
Is it about the minutes, like how it was captured?
No.
Okay, then, yeah, then, then, okay, so then that case, yeah, we'll talk about it. And I was, I was going to bring that up too, so if I forget, uh.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
Um, my concern was the, the payments were made for July and some of them were August. And I know some things are billed after council and then others for the next month are billed before, I mean, at different times when they cover two different months. But sometimes we've got two payments, so are there some payments that got missed?
Yes, there's been an issue with some of the invoices going to our system's old email. And so those, then, when they get denied, but that email isn't up, it's like going to like an automated, like do not reply for this business, you know what I mean? So say, an internet bill, right, comes in and then it says, oh, this email is no longer here. So it bounces back to who sent it, but it's like a do not reply, kind of an email. And so we've had to work through figuring out which ones are, are doing that.
Which ones are getting bounced?
Yes, and so there's been a little bit of a buffalo, yes, they are.
Um, are we not, do we not know when we have a bill coming in just because we don't get a statement?
So that information was not reported like that when Stacy took over.
Okay, is this?
Is it getting fixed?
It is getting fixed, yeah, it's getting better than ever, I believe, so.
She's doing a good job at like literally tracking the regular expenses so she knows mentally when things are going to come at her, where there wasn't such a risk before.
There wasn't like a, a regular log kept with all the due dates. And that's one of the improvements that we have now. We also are having a better understanding of the regular occurring invoices for the different departments. So there's a lot of growth that's happening.
I know, I'm just concerned I wouldn't want something to not get paid.
So are we, it's good, I mean, so.
Or get paid twice too, right?
Well, yeah, I don't, it's a concern, I have to admit, it's a concern. So I'm glad we're on it and hopefully we can get a new system that it doesn't happen again. It's happening now.
There.
Well, we're finding them now because they're like past due, you know, or something. Or we haven't seen those bills yet, so we're like, where is that one or whatever? And so we're working through those.
So.
But it's been an inconvenience for us too, especially for training for the person that's supposed to, you know, be helping us, so.
So maybe, are there still emailed, like receipts or emailed invoices that are coming to somebody?
I think we haven't all worked out now, but we don't know what we don't know.
Cause you could also, in the future, you can just set up like a, like, like a catchall emails for like finance at City of Sheridan and have everything going.
That's what, that's what we did.
Oh, okay.
So that's.
So then when somebody, you know.
Always someone there.
Yeah, that's been one of the improvements. So we have, now we have a finance one and we also have a planning one that is like a catchall. Exactly the improvement.
Uh, Jim, uh, it's the same thing, I was just wondering, uh, you know, we've got two payments here to the, uh, best pots that take care of our court bodies in Southside Park. If she could just annotate in there somewhere which time period it's for, it'd be real easy for us to see, uh, it says, it says July, obviously, we don't know what to break down. So if we could, it's like, yeah, we pay it in place because we should have, because we got bills, but, uh, they don't really stand out until you begin to, oh, here we are, August, July. And it would be nice if it was just, uh, indicated more clearly because I have a tendency to overlook the top portion and go straight to the bottom portion to see what we paid versus what was paid.
Yeah, I can convey that.
Um, Ivana, this is for you, on page thirty, there's a typo, it's rabies instead of rages. It says rabies, the rabies vaccine.
Well, page thirty is still Stacy's report.
Thirty and four, yeah, three, four is here.
That's about the record, right?
Yeah, the voltage.
Oh, yeah, that won't, that won't get, that won't get, correct?
And then I have a question about, uh, in the voucher directory on page thirty-two. Um, there was a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars spent on more playground equipment at Southside Park? So I thought there was already needed playground equipment there?
Well, that's just the generic one, it's actually the pavilions and the barbecues and the picnic tables. So that's all grant money. It's a part of what the, what we asked for in that grant and they have to get purchased, so. And then they get refunded. So yes, the playground equipment, it should, it's the pavilions, the picnic tables and the barbecues.
Yeah, because like the playground.
It's not as new as you think, it's getting very dated, so.
Oh.
Yeah, playground equipment gets used and abused and weathered.
Jim, I did that just today earlier when I was talking with Stacy, I apologize. I'm, well, I kind of brought it up, we didn't discuss it earlier. Page thirty-four, we've got a deposit for parking improvements, concrete work for Ketterball slash horseshoe bits. And this is the deposit we put down, done eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty bucks. How much concrete do we get in there?
That's not the only thing that was purchased for that, so let me follow up with that.
Yeah, I, because I, I asked, I asked Stacy about a concrete thing too, and I don't know if it's the same one. I know we're getting like thirty-four thousand square feet or something, just Ketterball.
Well, that's the same company that does the sidewalk improvements for the safe routes to school, the lifetime one?
I think, I think with it, it's for the parking lot, for the parking area and some other spots. But it's, it's like a area, but I don't know if this. But, oh, okay, maybe it's a different, I just know that one of the, the concrete related was for that. So I'm not sure if it's that one.
I'll follow up, I'll put the invoice in there. Yeah, is it, it's Legacy, I think is the name, that does the paving? Yeah, right above that one, like is the paving, is the fifty percent, uh, that's the, uh... Because another part of the grant is paving and the paving's going to happen around the walking trail that's kind of down there.
Oh, okay.
And so that will all be paved and just, I'm just so excited for that part.
So that'll be.
So the parking lot will be paved and the walking path, and we needed fifty percent down for the walking trail. That's all happening right now.
So and, and the road will be like paved like asphalt, so?
No, the road is still gravel, we did have a new grant for that part.
But, uh, okay.
We'd like to do that, but not yet. It needs to be engineered if we were to redo the road down there.
Oh, okay.
So it gets expensive.
Yeah. Uh, Liz?
On page thirty-nine of three forty-two, there's a eighteen thousand dollar, five hundred and seventy-three dollar... Hold on, let me get there, eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollar expenditure for dust control for gravel streets? What is, what is, what is?
That's part of maintaining gravel streets is paying for the dust control to go down. So that's a regular city expenditure.
Wow, that's.
But we do have gravel roads, we have quite a few gravel roads that the city maintains. And, yep, that's the cost, I don't remember how many, do you know how many? Either way, go ahead.
I don't have any exact total.
Then, yeah, but.
It's not oil, I've lived in places where they put oil on them.
We don't really know what it is.
Sometimes it smells fishy, so I'm thinking they use, um, restaurant return.
Oh, yeah.
And they mix it with other things, but I do know they use it in vineyards also.
Yeah.
But Gary says it's beaches. So it essentially has to be something that's environmentally unsafe, you know, for all of the streams and storm drains that it would potentially run into. So it is something that is environmentally friendly.
Less different than chip ceiling, right?
Yeah, this is like a, like a, like when you get squirted out to keep the dust down. So when you travel over gravel, you know, it kicks up all kinds of dust and goes places. People within urban areas don't necessarily want gravel dust all over. And so that's part of the cities, we're going to maintain our city streets that are still gravel.
Okay, one more question, um, on page forty-eight, and, and, um, does Tyler Software, is that the software that has something to do with the answering machines?
No, and that answering machine thing is, I know you guys want the answering machines taken care of.
Yes, and so do people in the public as well, yeah.
So Tyler Technology, this is the whole software conversion that's going to take about a year and a half for the city to do. And this is all of, every piece of our utilities and every piece of our financials that are being converted and also adding other pieces like court and code and it'll all be in one place and as well as planning. Uh, what I mean by planning is like the invoicing part of it and the tracking and project tracking and payroll and time sheets and every single piece of thing that the city does. We're going through a whole learning part right now and learning all the modules and downloading our information from Vision and it's being uploaded and double-checked by the software company. This is a very busy time in the office for that, uh, software transition. We've been told that we'll need to block out essentially two weeks in the beginning of September or October?
October.
October, because that will be the heavy and most intense time. Because if you enter one thing in there, guess what, it didn't get entered into the other one. And so there will be this really intense period of time.
So you have to like double treaty?
We have to have dedicated individuals for each one of the modules, essentially.
So the, so another company's going to check all the data convergence stuff? So if they have like a problem, will they check with you or, or Ivana or?
They'll run the old software at the same, the, the, basically running two software side by side, the old and the new, to see if they come out with the same end result. So then when we shut off the old one, the new one will be able to, or it'll prove itself.
It's really complicated with, especially utilities, like all that.
So, so then will, will it archive everything that Vision's had then, like all the, will pay that and it will be archived?
Yep, so everybody's account, if your account number one, two, three, you can see all your years behind it, so.
Liz, do you still have a question?
I'll wait till they, I'll wait till concerns.
All right, Jim, I'm looking at the same, uh, same page forty-eight or fifty-four. I see the annual subscription fee for our software, okay. Right below that is a, uh, annual subscription for project accounting. Why isn't that covered with our annual subscription considering how much we're paying that annual subscription?
I think it's not.
Probably.
It, it was an add-on.
I agree.
We decided to get, uh, well, we didn't realize we didn't have project accounting, but we wanted grants management.
No, makes sense if you need it, yeah.
And they said we had to have project accounting to get grants management, so.
And sometimes software will give you a base thing and then they're like, oh, yeah, you want? Yeah.
Mm-hmm, you have to have this one.
Yeah. Anybody have any, or should be in?
On the page forty-five, uh, under Skyberg and Lumber Hardware, with the Southside Park grade, seems that we purchased PVC cement and a four-inch cupboard, which lists at a hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. And I, I purchase PVC cement and four-inch cupboards all the time. And so I'm kind of curious as to how much of this was purchased because that's a lot of money to that.
Usually what happens here is, one of the reasons why we don't really like Vision, the software we're using, is because it depends too on how much you can actually put there. My guess is the Skyberg's list is quite long and these were probably one of the more expensive items that she put there. The best thing for you to do is if you see these things, is to let me know and then I can give you a copy of the invoice before the meeting or I can just email it after this. But there's going to be, usually Skyberg's is a pretty longer list of items. So what I'm saying is it's probably not just those.
Okay.
Items, so I will email out to the council invoice two four zero seven. Two four zero seven, okay, any other items that you could?
Uh, I guess expanding on that, I would like to see if there's a possibility that we could have an expansion of the descriptions here in general because it's not just one or two that I necessarily question about.
Best things you can do is probably sit down with the mayor when he goes to sign all the checks and you can look at all the invoices during that time too, that's a possibility for you.
Sure. So there's no possibility of changing?
Not in this software, not in this software.
So limited.
Okay.
That's been an issue for many years, that the council would like to have that result so that they can see more of those descriptions. Like, you know, on your checkbook where you have the memo part, right, if people want to have more of that, that's the whole.
So, you're good for that?
Um, I guess that, uh, doesn't really prove, like, there's, there's no solution to my, my questions. There's no changing the, what we have here, but maybe we could talk about that at a future meeting. So, to an editor's office or something, I don't know.
That, that's, that's the plan with the new software, with the Tyler Tech software.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, it's in action.
Question, answer.
And then the other solution would be that you can sit with mayor when he signs all the invoice things and look at the invoices, or we can just not file them and you can come in and look at them.
Or sometimes there's, there's copies of them. Or sometimes there's, there's copies of them too, so if there's ones like ahead of time, I guess if there's, there's one.
I can make copies of them, yeah. The software also allows for copies, um, to go in, and then they will be essentially recorded that way too, which is really nice.
Great, Jim. Yep, okay, nevermind. Okay, uh, any other questions about, oh, came back, okay.
Um, today, um, in your office, I had the conversation with Stacy about some of these, and she was offering me to show me the receipts. Which I didn't really, I just needed to know what was, what the non-technical things that couldn't fit into the description were. Cause that should be an option for me too, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, we can leave all the invoices out, or he can request single invoices. But we do eventually need to file them in a kind of, I suppose.
If you tell me where, when, where, that it would be convenient for the city, I would like to look at them, I would like to look at them. I guess I could talk more about my thoughts on that later, but since we're just approving this, we're not.
Any other questions? Anybody wanna make a motion? To approve, so we can do a fruit bowl.
I'd make a motion and that we, uh, approve the city, oh, the consent agenda as presented.
I saw it, I had.
And that includes the typos that we discussed.
It would be the amended minutes.
Yep, okay, okay, I think.
Amend my motion.
I think we're fine, I think we, yeah, I think we know what we're doing. Okay, first and second, any discussion? Ian.
So, just so that I'm clear, uh, since I'm kind of new on the council, um, if, if I approve this, then I'm approving all of these expenditures? If I?
Essentially, you're saying it's okay for the city to send out the checks.
Okay.
It's okay.
Okay, um, all right.
Great, any other question? All right, all in favor? All right, Lucy, did you, okay, all right, I don't see any of us, okay. Hopefully sent it, okay. Um, uh, okay.
Now, Jim. In the past, we have approved a bulletin board, about here separately, because some people here have a concept of interest. But then this time it's included in the stack, do we need to worry about that anymore, or we decided it's just okay?
It's a separate.
Yes, it's still a separate, a lot of, or, no, I don't know, separate agenda item, to the very top. Thank you, because.
Heidi.
One more, Stacy, there was been a question by Council Houston, you know, what are the articles or what are the ones we're making? So, uh, Stacy, did an inventory out there, hopefully you can see the check marks.
Yes.
My ad will be going away, because I won't have office hours. This Friday is my last one, if anybody feels like, you know, telling me their concerns. Yeah, well, they can always call or, you know, yeah. Um, okay, so now we have a bulletin board, so.
I think that we approved the bulletin board, that's for now.
Okay, first, Stacy.
Second.
You, you can't, you can't, you can't, yeah, you just, yeah, they just got them.
Yeah, what, what page number is that one?
I think it's fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, but I drink fifty-eight. Well, I think that the expense.
At fifty-eight, it's.
It's, it says West Valley Golden Board.
Who's the?
It's, it's.
Where's the amount of money?
Yeah, oh, that's what I'm asking, oh, okay.
That I saw, I would say two thousand. Fifty-eight.
No.
Where the two start, but that's not.
There it is, on page fifty-four. No, it's fifty-eight. Oh, that's where the examples start, but it says right here, on page fifty-four, West Valley Golden Board LLC, advertising, advertising. Advertising.
Oh, it's in there, okay.
So it is included, as I said before, in, in the value, so that's why I was asking if we need to vote separately, we just passed it.
I think we can still.
It's probably okay though.
It's still voting to approve that separately, I think. But is the, is what's on page sixty, is the deposit detail that breaks down? Yeah, she's, you know, what's what.
Usually the bulletin board is separate by itself in the consent agenda, on its own page, you have to say on that.
Oh, okay.
This time we didn't get that.
That's true.
This has been the problem with you got and I both got during the council, if it had.
Yeah, it was, it was terrible.
Poor Tyler.
I don't even know what page sixty-eight really is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. I think this is the West Valley Bulletin's information.
Oh, that is.
Sorry, you need to call it still over.
So I think we should go, I mean, it's too late for a vote, but some people should probably, yeah, is that yours? Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, we have a couple of issues.
We've, we've got, yeah.
We'll approve the West Valley Bulletin Board expenditure at the next meeting.
We are.
So do you care that people voted on that that have a conflict with it? They probably want to know.
Well. Yeah, we're, so why don't we just vote on the bulletin board expense, like the plan, and on the agenda?
And so then that would be the two thousand.
Yeah.
For giving.
Yeah.
Cause this other one is for August, is that correct?
Page sixty-eight.
Page sixty-eight.
We can neither confirm nor deny.
Sixty-eight should not be in your package.
Down or in the.
Yeah, cause that's different. That's what I'm saying, the tables don't match, but yeah, okay. All right, well, we still have a first section on this, um, any other discussion on the bulletin board expense?
We gotta figure it out.
All right, all, um, in favor? Okay, all opposed? All abstaining? Okay. I think it still passes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, moving on to farmer reports. Okay, so, chair's report starts on page seventy-three.
Deputy Grant, you have deputy grant here.
Oh, okay.
You have on board.
If you wanna follow up. Anybody has any, any questions? Um, I think last meeting, I know, I, I noticed there was a lot of DHS calls. And, um, I still see some of DHS calls, can you kind of explain what that is, does that involve, I mean, involves DHS? Do they go like to a house with Yamhill County?
Uh, sure, it depends, so the usual will happen is that the certain calls have like instantaneous DHS calls, emergency lines. So if we go to a house, we hear a call, and there's children present, and we think there's any potential fear of their safety, then we usually notify DHS in our emergency line. The DHS also operates independently less as well, so sometimes they'll get anonymous calls from like family members or like schoolteachers, people pretty much in the community. And if the DHS worker feels that a law enforcement response exists as well, then they'll contact us, and we join them on those calls, that's how we, how we identify.
But anytime Yamhill, well, anytime the, you know, kind of sheriff talks involved, then it would be noted here. So if DHS were to, you know, go on their own, it would be.
I don't think so, no. I would imagine, uh, if they was school out, people be at home more often, there's probably more unfortunate instances of children having to, having to parents or the family members.
Thank you, uh, any other questions or comments on this, oh, sorry.
So I wanna introduce you to Deputy Grant, he is the, what do you call it, the regular?
Uh, swing shift, yes.
The swing shift, that's where the swing shift deputy for Sheridan, um, and he's fantastic, and he's been doing a great job. And he wants to be in Sheridan, so we love that about him. And he's been working very hard and working very closely with COVID enforcement too. He's been doing a great job at being really receptive to what the nation needs, so I would like to introduce you to him. But one of the things he wants to do is be a regular at city council meetings too. And so I think, yeah, I think you'll all appreciate having that direct connection with Deputy Grant.
Absolutely, uh, can I answer any questions you want to ask? Uh, Ian, go ahead.
I have two questions, the first is, uh. Who compiles this list here of, uh, year to day, prior year and all this stuff, every, for every meeting?
One for, one.
All our concepts, yes, that would be.
The one, yeah, the, what, when, what ends up, what is, what ends up in the packet, like, that I see, what, who compiles it?
Yeah, it'd be our records department, and then it shouldn't be based on looking through and it gets that, usually above my pay grade on, on the bond listing, but it's, yeah. Any, any time we take a reporter, anything is reported to the county, it all goes into crime report statistics with the FBI. Uh, and so we compile all of that, and so I would imagine that list being put back out to you.
Okay, thank you.
And it, and it'll get sent to us.
And my second question is, um, when it comes to, uh, it has rate listed on here. Does that include cases of, say, statutory rape? And does it also include, uh, cases that are currently being tried? Um, or are these completed cases of convictions?
I'm not sure, based on the numbers, I would imagine it's, it's ones that have been like reported, um. But, uh, yeah, I can leave that, get, uh, it's qualification.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of the, it's a compilation, it's above my pay grade, but I'm happy to find out if you question you guys have.
Okay, thank you.
We like seeing those zeros.
Yeah, yes, same, same, same.
Any other questions for him, I know there's been questions about speeding before, the switch that's here.
Do you know, does Yamhill County, they still just have the two sweet trailers, or do they have any one?
Uh, only two that I'm aware of, it's possible, I think everyone like says it, I'm saying, we have stuff that I haven't heard about yet.
There might be a question for Commissioner Johnson.
I believe, yeah, I don't get to. Yeah, I was at least the second one, okay.
This is still my guy.
Can you please come to the list?
Yeah.
For the sweet trailer, they like to have the sweet trailer.
Yeah, is there a Pimo location for?
Sugar Road, Sugar Road, yeah.
That was like.
Yeah, well. That was Maine.
Well, I mean, I mean, we could have, ideally, you know, on every street, but, uh, we can't do that, but, uh, I know we have had one on Maine. That's been, it's several months ago, but, uh, I know recently someone has been telling me, uh, that Sugar Road's been, been real bad for speeding, so.
Yeah, it tries to sit on it more often, cause he happens to have that as well.
Well, sometimes it's like, you know, one, two, three in the morning, but.
Yeah, that one day someone was speeding down their ass over by a horse river, and then they, uh, they blacked out and dipped into a driveway before I could find them. So, yeah, so we're, we're coming on that for sure.
Uh, Liz.
Um, I have a question about towing away dilapidated arteries, and it came up, someone asked online, they said they, that, I'm sure this is a civil matter, but. Someone left one in, on their property, and they want it towed away. Do they call you and report that, or do they have to take that expense upon themselves?
Yeah, that's on private property, they have to take that expense upon themselves.
Wow. It's about forty-five hundred dollars, isn't it?
Or more, depending on what's inside, how it's been used, if the groundwater's been taken out.
Not advocating that they remove it from their property, but if they were to remove it from their property somehow, in some way, then it would not be, if it rolled out into the street.
Yeah, somehow. Somehow rolled out into the street.
Rolled out into the street, and that's become a city expense, and that's taken directly out of the code in the city and police department budget. So that's not, and, and the city takes it very seriously to figure out who did that, because that's a definitely. Yeah, so.
And I know there's been four of them in our.
Not a good idea.
Not good if it rolls, okay.
Heidi, what company does that, it's not a local company.
We tried to work with a couple of local companies, and we didn't have a lot of success with that, so we did have to go out further. And it's been a very difficult for many cities to find somebody to work with, but we did find a, a city, a tow company. Um, it's two actually, and I can't remember Rick's tow company's name, but his partner is like Big Owls Towing, it's Rick's.
Uh, I'm sure that's hurt least one.
Perfectly, yeah, that's.
That's why we have left, yeah, that's why, yeah.
He's, this is fantastic person, thank you.
He was a great one.
He does great working with people and talking with the issues, towing is really the last result, Rick does a great job, so is Angela.
To be, and, um, I mentioned this in the last, uh, the last meeting, but if they, if anybody does see, you know, um, anybody, you know, camping on any property or, you know, like living in an RV on the side of the, side of the road. Um, that's not legal, so they can call, correct, Y pong.
Yep.
Yeah, we had a gentleman, uh, uh, talked about with the, I said, yeah, just call them, not emergency number, that one, we have it all documented. Um, cause we love it when it says it's gonna talk to us, but like I said, it's, they call them first, and we keep a record of it, so we can see like, hey, is this RV being in other calls, other places, and just, we can track it better. But, yeah, people, people will call us, we can get that taken care of.
I have been, I've been sharing like, you know, just call it in, um, even, you know, as it either, as it's going on, or just, just to let, just to let, you know. Sheriff's Department know that it's, what is going on, basically.
I appreciate those calls.
What's that, any emergency, can I have her?
Yeah, it's, uh, five oh three, four three four, six five zero zero. Thank you.
Okay, um, any questions? No, for, for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on then to Public Works Director Report, and, uh, Gary is here.
I, I don't have anything to add, sorry I didn't have any pictures. I need clips notes to this one, we'll do it. Any questions you all have?
Another angry bee nest.
Man, there's been some, there didn't matter, it seemed like.
Gary, Gary and his team have had actually quite a few leaks and repairs too, that have been keeping them very busy. And it is really important that people remember to call those in when they see, uh, suspected things. Uh, we do have really good leak detection equipment, and we can get to them pretty swiftly anymore to figure out where they're located. But it does take a whole community to essentially keep your eyes up for those. They've also been doing a lot of pot holeing.
And then you get instances like we had out there on East Main where we fixed one leak, and we discovered two other issues. So like that valve can that's leaking, that goes to an abandoned water line that was never kept. So it's just one of those snowball effects, where you make one very successful repair and it permanent, and then you find two more that you work on, but that's just the name of the game. And we've got a great crew, those guys, they really, I mean, this, this summer, if you can see them, that they're excelling by leaps and bounds, as opposed to just one summer ago.
You also didn't write how much you've been doing on the, the OSHA work that you require to have done.
We've got a list, and we've been just picking away at it if we can, I know there's a lot of little smaller items that we were able to jump on, but, yeah.
Another thing is on here that I'm really proud of them for doing, uh, since I've come aboard, one of my big things was I wanted all of the streets to have street signs. And for them to be read, read, readable, legible, and to, I, it's hard for me to find one anymore that doesn't need to be updated. So I think that those things in a city look nice to have done, and that they're important, um, you know, they're an important piece of what we take care of. And they go a long way just visually.
Um, you know, once you start to get chip seal, excuse me, project, approximately how many streets you're gonna be able to get to?
We should be able to get to all of them next week, we're doing.
Not all the streets in the city.
No, no, all, we have, so we have a, a map that we, uh, that we distributed, gosh, it's been a little six months ago. We, we should be able to get it all done next week, we've already started the prep work on Yamhill Street, we're doing Yamhill. We, we should be able to get it all done next week. We've already started the prep work on Yamhill Street. We're doing Yamhill, uh, from Cherry Hill to Washington. We're doing Ball from Cherry Hill around the corner, back down to Yamhill. Uh, First Street from Railroad to Chapman. And then off of Sheridan Road, it's, ooh, I can't remember the names off of those small streets.
Is it, is it gonna hit, um, Gardner, like, next to Gardner and, you know? I just noticed a couple.
Oh, and then, and then we met with a, uh, new, uh, I guess it would be a consultant last week. I do not remember the name of his, what is it?
His name was Joel.
His name is Joel and he has, uh, thirty years of experience working for Marion County, uh, doing all of their road, basically road analysis. And they're also working in those small communities such as Hamity, uh, Dalton, Carlton, Yamhill.
Sheridan and Willamette are the only cities in Yamhill County that he doesn't.
Right, and so we are, uh, he's going to get us an estimate to help us with that. They do, uh, they use lidar drone as opposed to the majority of the work is boots on the ground. And that way they can actually see the road conditions because you're not gonna get as accurate, um, uh, look at the road condition unless you're on top of it. You can get the lidar scans which will show you dips and, and inconsistencies in the road, but you, you need to be on the ground and present to see the actual heaving or, or alligator in or many of the other conditions. If you're getting, uh, like, lane that worked the entire room, I can't think of a word.
Or sinkholes, yeah, and he does it in about two to three block increments. And so you, the city council, it will be very involved in the report part of it and understanding some of the worst parts of the community streets. You'll actually have factual information then to make good financial decisions. And you'll also be able to know how far back in maintenance costs you really are. So that is gonna be really, um, really an adventure for all of us to see together.
And then the other thing too is I learned in this meeting is, and I, I had a good grasp of this, but he just reaffirmed it, is like, you don't wanna attack your roads in, that are in the worst shape at the beginning. When, if there's two or three that are in, like, complete rebuild, rebuild mode, but you've got eight or ten that you can save and seal and say, so they're, they're not on that falling off the cliff yet. Where you have the three that are already at the bottom of the cliff, you wanna save your resources you have. And then, yeah, triage and then, you're how we're going to make the complete replacements as needed. But this will, so this, so this will give us a tool and then it'll, should be available. I think he said that the software makes it so it can be on the, the website, so say if wanting, or if the N calls in and says, hey, you know, my street's the worst one in town, well, we can say, well, this is what the software gives us and this is, so we have actual facts as opposed to, like, I think my street's the worst in town, but maybe it's not.
And people can see maps, because I'm like a visual person, so if we go with the map model.
And it'll be color coded as to, you know, green, red and orange or, you know, s- something similar to that, so it'll give us all visual.
Do you wanna tell them last but not least, I guess, I can make you talk all night, but you should probably tell them about Stella Jones is gonna be doing their practice.
Yeah, Stella Jones, they've contacted myself and I'm not sure, uh, I know they were gonna reach out to Heidi, but they're gonna be basically doing, um, uh, Lifeli's gonna be involved, the fire district's gonna be involved, they're gonna have a rescue operation. And so there's gonna be just a complete, what they call it.
Like practice emergency situation.
And so they wanted, they're gonna, they let us know so that way we can maybe help to advertise for that because there will be Lifeli that comes in. Uh, they're, they're just doing a full, full go-through on it.
And lots of emergency vehicles during that time, and so they don't want people to be calling the police or be worried. So they want all of us to start, start sharing with others, and I think it's on Monday, September sixteenth, somewhere.
I believe that's correct. They're supposed to send us the exact announcement. I have encouraged them to not only, uh, reach out to the bulletin board, but make sure the fire district is gonna be, uh, getting information out, we will. Uh, they're also, um, gonna try to get us something for the sandwich board up front, so, you know, we're, we're trying to reach everybody because, uh, Stella doesn't have social media or anything like that, so they're relying on word of mouth essentially to get this out.
Will this be?
Uh, Ian's first.
You can go first, I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead, Liz.
Will this be on their property or all, okay. Yeah, it's like a what-if, practice scenario, emergency management exercise. Again?
This is an, this is an actual, like, you're, like, something not heard type of deal, so they, they're trying to, I mean, it's, yeah. Exercise, yeah, Ian, go ahead.
Uh, for the street map.
Yes.
Thing that you were talking about, what's that called and when, when should it be?
Chip sealing and it's starting on, it's supposed to start Monday, the twenty-sixth, but I talked to him today, if the rain comes in and it's to where they can't finish their project at Clackamas County on Thursday this week, then we will get pushed one or two days.
That's for the triage of the streets?
I don't think that that's what she was talking about.
He's talking about the, um.
The pavement management.
Yeah, the pavement, pavement management.
See, I'm starting to communicate with you, Ian. So that, we don't know when that whole story.
He's, he's, I'm sorry, when will the map, we don't know when the map.
No, he's still getting us an estimate together, so, uh, and it's gonna, I believe it's gonna have more than one item on it and we'll bring it to the council so you guys can, um, make the decision.
Because I did fill some of the costs into the budget.
Yeah, just had a, a good guess of when you gave us that map. I've got all the packets here, just can't find it.
No, that map is, the street map?
No, no, the map for, um, chip sealing.
The chip seal map.
Oh, that one.
It's, it's around the park.
Yeah.
If not, it, it, um, I could be good. It's not gonna take me that long.
But whatever, whatever was on that map though is gonna be all chip sealed. There's not gonna be like a section left out or. No, no, everything on that that I have, that I highlight on the map.
Okay. Okay, so when you do find it, whatever it says, it's, it's.
Definitely the rock, the lot of the rock has been stockpiled, I believe, on Cherry Hill, and then there's some, you're just outside.
So this is, so this is like, uh, like an outside, like a third-party company that's helping chip seal.
We partnered, yeah, so we partnered in with, um, Yamhill County as far as hauling the rocks, so saved us some costs getting the rock hauled in. We're also, uh, I guess it would be, say, we piggyback this whole project off the county because they're getting, uh, having a whole bunch of chip sealing done around town, including, I would say the first mile and a half or two miles of Rock Creek Road is getting redone, is getting re-chip sealed.
Yeah, I, I knew, yeah, I knew Yamhill County was involved, it was supposed to, to, I know they have been working on Rock Creek Road out there, but.
We're gonna finish this week, uh, do a lot of the pot-holing and make sure we get all that sealed along Yamhill Street. And all the streets that we're doing and then we have to start sweeping and, and prep, uh, they've been here Monday and then we have to go on, sweep everything else off again after they get done.
Roxy, go.
This is just a great opportunity for us because they partnered with Yamhill County and we probably would not have been able to do this by ourselves.
No, no, not with both fees and all the extra fees that we're avoiding and, you know, uh, the IT that we entered into with the county.
Thank the county somehow.
Chip sealing isn't the highest end way, but we're hoping that it gets some, it gets something.
I guess not, but we seals it, uh, typically. Typically chip sealing is like a fifteen-year, uh.
Fifteen-year?
Fifteen, twenty. As opposed to, like, your slurry seals are about five, seven years. So it's roughly the same cost from my experience.
Any other questions?
I know if you were, just write that down.
We might, we might have questions later on, but I think, we're, we're good for now. Thank you guys.
Thanks, thank you, Gary.
Yep.
Welcome back. Um, I found out that the county has three speed trailers and one is being repaired. And if we want to request them, we'll request them through Captain Whitlow and, and.
So like four total in one of them?
No, three total, one being repaired.
Two, two.
Two operator.
Gotcha, okay, we can, yeah, we can do that. Okay, so next we have the library report.
The library director cannot be here this evening. Any, um, comments on it?
Any other questions? Ian?
I'm curious as to the library closures, the extensive amount of library closures that we've had this month. Can you please expand on that?
Yeah, we have, um, the library director who's out. How do I? We have the library.
Director personal.
Director out for personal, and we have another, uh, library staff member who is unpaid, need work and looking for guidance, if I can say. But that leaves us to two employees. That's it. So we have been doing the absolute best we can. Um, we've been, we've been using a city hall staff to go over because their lunches are from one to three. But then we've had a serious bout of sickness or illness that has made its way through the city hall. And that has also been easy for us to go over and extend our help because we're very short-staffed here. So there's been the closures basically due to not enough people, employees. Does that explain that?
Yes.
It's not.
Go ahead.
Um, my other question is about the end of summer event that the library put on, the reading event at the park. And I'm curious as to why that ended, uh, it was either an hour or forty-five minutes early?
Did you attend?
It did.
And you, and you were there and it stopped at ten?
It ended at eleven forty-five.
Ended at eleven forty-five, and you were there at eleven forty-five at the church.
I was, yep, I have the picture of the event.
I was just curious, like, give me more information so I can have a better conversation.
Sure, yeah. Spent probably an hour at the park actually talking to some lovely young men that were proselytizing in our city, so Mormons.
Oh, okay. Okay, and power.
They were out talking about religion.
Yeah.
Interesting, young men, they are living in our city and they're.
Yes.
Far away from home.
And they're willing to help people that need help.
Yeah.
Three of them are thirty.
Yes, it was, yeah.
They've been in my friend's house.
Walk in my neighborhood.
That's a good thing. Okay, any other?
They have help with the food thing? Big, but help with the food.
Any other questions on this? All right, um, so move on to, uh, code enforcement safety report. I think that was emailed to us, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are we going to?
Well, uh, code enforcement and safety report, it, it got emailed to us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, how do you make, play, do, copy it, some of the.
Well, anybody have questions on this paper? Okay, we'll move on. Nobody has any questions, uh, to the safety report report. And that starts on people.
And I know Roxy has some questions on the budget report. I can tell you that the grant tracking is really exciting because we've completed the food bank grant, right Judy? And so, um, we're just waiting for the final reinforcements from, um, business organ, but we've completed all the culture paperwork and getting most of the money into Judy's account and we're about done.
Than the rest of it. It is very exciting. In the revenue and expenditure reports, you'll probably notice that those have zero budget amounts and that's because we haven't.
Yeah, we have all that.
We, yeah, we know that. We haven't closed the books yet and opened the new fiscal year. We still are, you know, doing, have a finance director, a full-time position in here, and so that's one of the things, but there's, this can be done. And as long as we're tracking, you know, in the lines, the information, uh, which is connected to, I mean, every line is connected. Every line in the budget is connected to this report. They're, they're tied together. So when you write a check, it comes out of, you pick the line, you know, number, like if you were looking at revenues, which is in the opposite direction. But for instance, like, um, parks supply, right? So that's ten, which means general fund, fifteen, parks department, six oh one, which means supplies. So you type that in, essentially we go to write a check and then it'll trigger that account number. And then the math, um, we usually deduct it from the budget, but we at least have in that we spent sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents in that. So then later when we enter the number that was approved to the budget book, that's sixty-three dollars.
Oh, yeah, so start with the little patients in the budget, all of those numbers are on, on this report.
Yep, and those all need to be, have the previous year closed before we know what we're beginning. And we're working with the auditor right now on that, but it would be nice to have a full-time position in here. About hiring is complete.
Nine and eight applicants?
Um, no. Let's do.
Mark four.
F four.
Okay. Maybe they'll come in at once.
Finger strikes, usually that's what happens.
Yeah.
With applications, because people wait till the last day.
Okay, any other questions on this?
Also part of the city recorder report is, we've had three people apply to be on city council speaking with deadlines.
Yes, yes.
I was ready to tell you the council, but yeah. Do you wanna?
So we have, um, Nicole Maravito and we have Roxy Incas and, um, Christina Avila.
And the due dates are.
August twenty-third, the, at three o'clock. Friday, so this Friday.
This Friday.
Oh, this Friday, okay.
This Friday.
Friday at three.
All right, that was next week, okay.
Because August is not like that.
Good.
There's three. There's three and there's three of them.
Yeah, that's right, that's good.
Okay. Let's go back to the grant tracking, um, sheets, page, uh, one eighteen, if you can, three, two. One eighteen, one eighteen, okay, all right. Um, I mentioned this to you today, Heidi, and I know you're obviously aware. Uh, this is, uh, what it says, this is for the water mask complaint, which we've been anxiously waiting. So far, we've paid Civil West ninety-five thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And from what I understand, the topic with you, they say they're seventy-five percent done.
Correct. We received a draft report on Friday at five twenty-two or something PM. And it said that they were seventy-five percent done in that draft. Um, I wrote back about specific information about what feedback they're looking for from Gary and I specifically. We received that information and setting up a meeting to push the whole thing forward. But I told them not to wait for our feedback, just to keep on going. The reports that, or the, the sections that, um, I can't remember all of the sections off the top of my head. But the sections that still need to be finished include the executive summary, the capital improvement plan, and that's the part where they're looking for some more feedback directly from Gary and I. And the seismic assessment portion of it, which is a longer portion that's required by the state, um, to have that part portion in there. And the state does look very closely at that to make sure that it's a good, a good amount of information. Um, and there's a couple of other bullets on the list, but I can't remember them right now off the top of my head that still need to be completed.
Is it, say, say they can't give us a, a final date because we're still giving them information, they don't know where they're going?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, the portions that Gary. Yeah, I guess so. I mean, the portions that Gary and I have to complete, I don't think should tie them up for the seismic assessment piece. That piece can take a while to write, but the Gary and I's information that we have to give them is not nuclear science. So it won't take too much time for us to produce that. Definitely by the beginning of September, Gary and I are supposed to have that for the last meeting that we have with them.
So while we're on the water master plan last in May, I went to the meeting with Heidi, Gary, and I believe Liam. We're talking with the engineers and I asked him, I need to know a date when this is going to be done. And he said three months, and that was in May. So that's where they're at now. So they told me they'd be done, but they're now seventy-five percent.
We do have Civil West here on the phone if anybody wants to, or on Zoom, Chris is there. And you can ask him questions directly. I know he's going to be involved in the later portion of it. There's Chris right there. I don't know that he has a lot to do with the water master plan. It's his cohort, Tim. But he may be able to relay any messages or take questions on those.
Hello, Captain. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I'm certainly happy to bring answering any questions you may have or relating any information.
Roxy.
I had relayed to Heidi some months ago, wanting to get some sort of a report to council from Civic West. Did that get to you?
What did you say? What?
Just kind of a progress report.
Oh, yes. A progress report on the different projects. So tonight is part of that, the ADA project.
And I didn't expect it tonight, but I just learned that that could be one that we could expect. What?
Sorry, we can't prepare something. All of the projects?
Yes, that's what we're asking Kevin. Chris is like our, Chris is the, a project engineer for planning trials. So he doesn't always have to say it over loud. And Tim is the one that gives the color man that came.
Oh, I think if, if anything, I think you just pass along if the council is frustrated it's taken this long. So if, that's one thing to pass along, I guess it would be that. Because, you know, the main reason I asked is because I wanted to start, you know, going out and asking for funding. Because part of the water master plant, master plan is going to incorporate Stony and how to hook it up. And I can't ask for money from our legislatures or get grants if we don't know how much it's going to cost. So I'm kind of in a waiting grid. So that was part of my frustration, but I know I'm sure council has other frustrations with this. But I think if you pass that along, that would be, that'd be great. Anybody else have any?
Well, I think we let them know this was a priority for us. This is one of the things that shared wrote. I mean, other things have come up, but we are frustrated. We do have our hands tied and we were depending on you. So yes, frustration is setting in.
I know that's, I know that's not on you, Chris, but you're the one who's here.
You're the messenger.
Any other? I guess this was just this one topic on the grant tracking sheet, but it had to do with Civil West. Okay, well, we may have more questions if we get to.
Hang up, don't go.
Okay, but yeah, but yeah, thanks for being here though. Tyler, yeah, well, hold on. Is there any other questions on the city report? Alright, Tyler, what do you have?
I, Liam didn't have a written report, the city planner's report. And he did talk to me last week when I was like one of two people in the office. Unfortunately, I sit in Heidi's office and that's where people come from. But we have had a lot of development-related items come through. Applications, but also FEMA has been working on, there were so many acronyms, I don't want to butcher all of this, but something about implementing endangered species acknowledgement, floodplain development. I'm thankful he was not here to hear this. He has been very, very busy. So he was asking how to prioritize his work and how much of a priority the planning, planners' report was versus the actual work that he was doing. And as the person who was sitting in Heidi's office talking to Liam, I did, I let him know that I, I thought that the actual planning work was more important than compiling the report this month. So I just wanted counsel to know if he wasn't just slacking for fun.
Yeah, he told me, he told me, since he didn't have a report to share something about, forgot what he said, so. It was, it was, it was.
It was important, though.
Me and him talked about several different things. I know we talked about FEMA, we talked about floodplain, we talked about.
Do we want to talk more about the floodplain stuff or not?
With FEMA?
Yes, it is very contentious at this point.
And it's not final, so I don't think we should.
It's not final, but there is a lot of people that are advocating to get cities more local control, which is important. Always to remember that the cities, the best thing that they can do is always advocate for local control of your rules.
And the lead Oregon cities person lobbyist who is, I can't remember all of their department group names, but they send out an email to their members that it's on their radar. And the process has not been very transparent or accommodating for cities, so.
This is the federal government, just to underline that part. The other thing that I think is, we want to pay myself.
No, I just, FEMA's always been difficult to work with. They've not been transparent. And we, as a city that has floodplain issues, have had a hard time getting a lot of information from FEMA. Jim Jackson did his best. He was wonderful to work with. He got me information I need as a, as a builder, and I know he did for others. But that just seems to be FEMA's way, just our hard to build.
The other thing that Liam has been keeping, that's been keeping Liam's time really busy is that we have a planning commission. There was an application for a subdivision that had expired and then it came back. And it's a hundred and seventeen homes that are between Western and Viola. And there was a public hearing on that. And there was a couple of people who came to the public hearing, which is always nice that people make the time to do that. And at this point, the, there was a couple of minor changes that the planning commission wanted to see. But Liam is writing his final report for that. The subdivisions here in the city of Sheridan do not need to go before the city council for approval. However, if there is an appeal, it would come to the city council. So I, so that's a big thing. What was that?
This is what they'll talk about.
They'll talk about it. So the other, it is, yes, it's very important for you to remain fresh neutral judges in case there is an appeal for that. The other thing that's been keeping Liam busy is he's been having a lot of people come by and visit him. And that is also a good thing, but it's just the type of the season it is. There's a lot of building going on. And he is the first stop, of course, I was, he's the first stop before you have to go somewhere else. You have to come here in order to get your sign off before you go over to county for the building department. So that keeps him very busy. He had a giant pile of them. I think he said thirty or something, thirty-ish the other day they had payment. So that can keep him very busy. So let's see, I can't think of anything else right now.
That's the big stuff, that's the big stuff. But busy Liam equals busy Tyler.
She's a busy Heidi.
Well, don't we have ordinances coming up that the planning commission have worked on?
Oh, yes. Oh, my goodness. We have all of the development code stuff that we've all been working for housing. And so he did present that in final, the three-fourths of it was done at one meeting. And then this last Monday, the other fourth was done and finalized. He got all the feedback he needed from the planning commission. And he will be before the city council because those are code changes. And so he will be giving his presentation. What did he say? Soon? I forgot what his timeline was.
I don't remember. I'm sure it will be one of.
By the end of the year, what's that, end of May?
I think it's September. September. I think it may be your Tuesday meeting after Labor Day is.
We only have one meeting in September.
You're going to meet Monday after September. So, I mean, the Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
But Monday.
For February, September, and then the third Monday.
Oh.
Yeah, it was Monday. Yes, and that's a huge thing. And he also submitted a grant for the transportation growth management to the DLCV to redo our city's transportation plan. So fingers crossed we get that. Would be really nice. So that would be to hire a consultant to do that work. So he obviously has been busy with that as well. I mean, helping with the lawyers and support.
Is our transportation plan up to date?
That's one of our worst bugs, Roxy. I think it's almost as old as I am.
I wouldn't believe that. There are no plans that are technically concerned. I'm watching me to do, yes. Finding the funding for some of the updates or is.
Those are the ones that live on my list.
Yeah. Alright, I think that.
Right, moving on then. Anybody have any other questions for Tyler?
Oh, well, also Heidi and I got scholarships to go to a roundtable conference.
Oh, cool. Tyler is way more excited than I am.
I am really excited.
No, we didn't say else at the conference is more excited.
And that. So I'm prepared.
And that's next, is it this Wednesday?
I would hope so. Lucy, do you have a question?
No, I just had a comment in regards to FEMA that, you know, I know it's federally regulated, but, you know, federal government also said that marijuana was illegal. And then they decided to keep state up in their own decisions. And I think that we should push it in that format with FEMA that we should be able to make those own decisions also. And that would help us out because, you know, we're not living in New Orleans.
Local control.
Yep. And I just think that if we don't do it, they'll just overlook us. And then so will everybody else who wants to build or bring any businesses to town. Because whether it's like a Hyder building or anything, you know, they'll just, anything new, like Heidi was saying, even building new commercial, you know, they'll just hammer them and then they'll just go.
Okay, okay, so next we'll go ordinances and resolutions. We have a sample script, okay. So first one is ordinance twenty-two-four dash six. Do we have any questions about this particular one? Heidi, do you have?
Let me just say Chris was helpful for this public works standard update. And so he can answer all the technical questions that we may have, or Gary.
Just, and just to clarify, Chris's questions with, or the answers that Chris can provide are more related to the resolution on the actual public works standards, less so along with ordinance and that nature. Our permission.
So his answer is more for the second item, not this first item, correct?
Okay.
Is that a heads up, Dan?
Alright, Ian.
I'd like to move to postpone the vote on this until the next city council meeting so that we have adequate time to review the things that we're adopting. This is quite a bit of information that was given to us just a couple days ago. So I'd like to have more time.
Sure. Good. First and second. Any other discussion on that?
I have a lot of questions. I want to run them up now so that we have.
I have a pair either way.
So we have, so we know what we're interested in, then maybe come research if they don't get an answer.
Yeah, I guess it would depend on the option of this option. Because if it passes, then yeah, you'll have a lot more time to pick up those questions. Yeah, come on with the questions, hit the list, submit them and all that stuff. Yeah, there is a lot better to watch. Listen.
I do have a general question. When we pass, if, when we pass something like this, is it retroactive? It's just at the point you pass it, right? So people are already grandfathered in with sidewalks and.
Even construction authority in processes grandfathered in.
Okay.
Or land use.
So we have a first and a second to postpone this. Are you ready to?
I just, to clarify, Ian, your motion would be to postpone both the ordinance and the resolution, correct?
Yes, I, no, I, I took that.
It was the same topic, so I assumed that your motion was covering it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I do need to cover both of them. And I do mean that the next city council meeting then is probably help, which would be, I guess, a problem now.
The regular meeting or the work session? The work session's the first one in September. I'm, I'm fine with having it the regular meeting.
To clarify my motion, I think I would look to some of the other members of council on the time period of which one I would like.
We, the work session or the next one? I don't, I don't know if I can do that. I think, I think if you just postpone it and then, okay, we, your motion, I think we find a postpone it and then we can kind of get a consensus of, we can postpone it too. You don't have to have the date in the motion, though.
Okay.
So first and second, go ahead and call for a vote, and all in favor. Alright, that's the yes. Okay, so now, I think, I can talk about, maybe do we want to do the work session? That would give us more time. We're not going to have as many topics during the work sessions. We could really, we would need to turn into a special session at that point if we're going to work on this, et cetera. If we, if you're going to vote. We can still work on it without it being a special session, but if we're going to vote on it, which, in that case, I don't know if we would want to vote in the same meeting. I think what's going to be at the, isn't it going to be a special session anyways?
I do not remember how that happened, but if, at the work session, it would allow you to have more, what do I say, like a topic, right? Like you can really expound upon your thoughts.
Discussion.
Then, yes, discussion. So if that's what you're looking for, or if you think that you're just going to read it and you'll be able to get your questions, you know, to Chris or set up a meeting with him, go through it all. And then you feel like, oh, you know, all your questions will be answered that way. Or you could invite like Chris to come again and have, you know, a baby conversation with all of you. So there's a couple of ways to kind of practice, which is, do you just want to sit like one-on-one with Gary or talk to Chris over the phone or give him a list, an email list? Or do you feel like this is actually something that you really want to get down into the weeds on? There is not the expectation for a council to like understand the minimum pipe cover. I mean, that's like why we hire the professionals, which is Chris and Gary. And so essentially, the council isn't being asked to like go through this and compare, you know, pipes, right? You're being asked to go through this and make sure that in the general sense that there isn't anything alarming here or.
For the work session, I'm trying to remember what topics we have. I know we can talk about properties across the street.
Yeah.
Is that it?
And then I have, you and I have a couple of things on there to talk about.
Well, we can, we can have it on there as this, on there as a topic. And then if we think we need more time, we can always talk about next meeting, the next meeting, hopefully not the next.
Well, the reason why we do want to get this up sooner or later is, I mean, we do have the city of Salem standards at this point is what's been used for years here. years here. And they are very large compared to what a city the size of Sheridan needs. And they can be difficult for our construct, for our developers, especially because we have more kind of bomb and pop developers, if you will, than I'm sure Salem does. And so they can be cumbersome and, you know, overburden some for our development. And so the sooner the better. I don't want to put any pressure. I want everybody to be comfortable. Of course, I agree if you want to go this route, but I don't want to see this like to go, 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 go. Because you need to know that you're not responsible to know what, what's his word, Buddha dying rubber. So just kind of keep that in mind.
Well, and maybe having it on the next meeting because the items are good anyways, because sooner we can discuss it. Okay. So yeah, we'll discuss it next, next meeting, September, or is that? Roxy, do you have a question?
Is there a reason we need to get this done sooner for any reason?
The city of Salem public works standards are not very well designed for sure.
So I guess.
These are public works design standards that are specifically geared for less and our development.
And our developers have to say, why are you making me go through this?
Right.
So the sooner the better because we are seeing more and more people and we have thirty applications of the.
But one way to look at it too is it's been this way for years. But we would like it changed. Yeah, but also it's been this way for a long.
Make sure you balance it and don't make it too long. That's expectations for you.
Yeah. Yeah. And if, and if they're, you know, real technical, um, you can send it to Chris or if they're more general, if you're Heidi, Gary or email them.
Or all three of us.
All three. Or, I mean, if, if you want to wait until the meeting, that's works, but it would.
Ask me.
Yeah, ask me ahead of time would definitely help. And you could even ask ahead of time and then share your, the answer you get at the meeting.
I would feel more comfortable also doing that.
Okay. Okay, so well, so, well, um, the next one then is resolution twenty twenty four dash X. A two. Oh, we just, nothing on any of the two hundred pages. Okay.
Yeah, we will not be printing this again for your.
So hold on.
So I, look, so, uh, Heidi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, um, ODOT's ADA, um, sidewalk basically, right? And, um, this is just an easement to allow them to work.
No, this is they will take ownership of it. So.
They will not take ownership of it.
Oh, well, you should ask Tyler. Tyler's one involved. I thought that's how I read it.
The permanent easement would just mean we would still retain it, but we allow them to work on it anytime they want.
That's correct. And they have the maintenance obligation. So this is specifically talking about the sidewalk at the southeast corner of Main and Bridge Street. So the, I guess the, that would be the northeast corner of the bridge.
It's the one that's near our water intake device.
Right, where we have the fence.
Yeah. And so we would be granting a permanent easement covering approximately a hundred and seven square feet, which is the space that ODOT needs to install their ADA compliant ramp and the relocated, um, I forget the technical word, but the pedestrian light.
And this.
So where would they relocate it? Would it still be on that corner? They're just gonna move it? Okay.
All right, Heidi, go ahead.
Sorry.
I think the, it seems to me, um, after I looked over this, that there's no real downsides to it. I just.
I would agree.
They're gonna pay us money.
And they're gonna maintain it.
And they're gonna maintain it.
Right.
And then we're gonna keep ownership.
Oh, yeah.
So it kind of seems great.
And we get thirteen hundred dollars.
Is on, on this particular spot though, do we know, do we have any, do we have anything running underneath? Like, you know, water? I'm guessing it runs down the middle of the street, not the sidewalk, but.
Well, right now Gary's working with them on the whole, where are all of our infrastructure is under the ground for this whole giant project? And that is a convoluted mess.
Cause I, cause from what I understand, if, if they were to improve, you know, or fix their ADA spots and they hit our water line, that's on us to fix.
It's on us. It's before that. So we're hoping nothing gets hit. So before we are working with them, Gary is working with them to identify all the places that there is, uh, a conflict, like what's the C word? A conflict for either any of our pipes that are in the areas where they're doing their improvements. And then it is on the city's dime to, um, uh, to put them in a space that isn't in conflict. So that has been a interesting and significant information piece of this project that I have tried to lobby for. But I, we should probably get me down with the weeds on this, but the city will actually have to pay if there is any conflict. And there is definitely conflict. Some of our water and sewer and storm, and storm. So Gary's working on what that looks like. Um, Civil West has offered to help with the project management, but I think Gary and I can do it ourselves.
So that was my only reasons why we maybe shouldn't approve this is that if they get in there and hit something, then that we've got to either relocate it or.
They can identify where the pipes usually are beforehand. Hitting something and it's built these preferred methods to do it. And so they do a lot of work, which is called potholing beforehand to make sure that the designs and the maps that they have are accurate. Right?
Great, Danny.
So isn't there any record of the last time this?
Last time what was?
Did they put ADA crosswalks in, uh, landings on the streets? All through Main Street they have them. And they put them in.
Yes, and then there was a lawsuit.
There was a lawsuit.
ADA had a, there was a.
Oh, I'm not asking that. I'm not asking that. I'm asking located the sewer and the water under those. There should be records of that, right?
From the last time they did.
From the last time they did this.
Turns out, but they're not that accurate.
Yeah, they're not.
That's why we're having to do all this extra potholing. It doesn't matter. So.
Because when people put things in the ground, they don't always, uh, go back and say what they put things.
My favorite tip will say that it's ten inch PVC and it's six inch cast iron or galvanized or it's not even there. Or it doesn't have all that in there.
Yes.
Those, those situations. The situations Gary mentioned might not be, although it's not particularly DA, but they are. They are. Oh, wow. Okay. That's, okay. Those, those guys.
That's why it's a convoluted mess. Some of the areas are very old to.
A little bit with the two sides of the, of the river and everything goes across there. I mean, that's traffic.
Yeah, Main Street is a very big area for infrastructure underground.
And when they do the repair, I mean, the building of this, they don't want to hit our pipes either. I mean, they're going to be trying to do right thing. We don't really just, I mean, it's.
That's why there's so much beginning work that they're doing.
Gary, you want to come up?
So we started with a list, I believe, that we have from ODOT of, I want to say it was like a hundred and eight different conflicts. So in the last month, we went and we've measured valve cans that are exposed. We've tried to find a couple that are not exposed anymore. So we've got those measurements down for them. So, um, instead of having a pothole at every intersection, we've, we've given, uh, to Civil West our, our measurements. And so they're getting most of the designer of the project. Um, we've also eliminated several that were like old meter, uh, setters or meter standings for homes that have moved to different mains. So I think we've got this list down to like eight or ten conflicts. So we've made good progress. And there's, there's a few, but with the measurements and stuff that we've gotten in Civil West, um, and working with the designers, we're hoping to knock that down to maybe one or two. But by the time the project starts. So it's just been a long, drawn out process with Emilio Design who's designing it, ODOT and the engineers, it's, it's big. There's a big circle of people.
So I think time the, um, the engineering company wants to take a look at something, of course, they're charging the city for that, correct?
Yes.
And when they had the lawsuit before, it was because they put the ramps in and they hit pipes underneath. I mean, you said there was one, I was.
Tyler, would you explain, this is a, this is a state level lawsuit that happens.
I guess I may be not aware of that.
They physically installed them wrong, right?
They were not, they did not install them to appropriate ADA standards. So they were not actually ADA compliant.
So not actually.
They mean.
ODOT.
ODOT and them being different locations in different cities on the, the roadways that ODOT maintains. They, they had ADA compliance groups that went out and actually did measurements and found it, what they declared irresponsible construction over and over in different areas. And so they took ODOT to port, the ADA group, and they won. And the court directed the state of Oregon to go through every highway intersection that they have and to install ADA compliant ramps. And so part of that is right down here in Sheridan, Sheridan, well, I know it's our turn now to go through this process.
So.
I'll let Jim's first.
I think you have the guidebook.
Yeah, he, yeah, he gave it. Anyway, um, they're talking about a hundred and seven square feet. Not a lot. However, if they start digging or whatever they're going to do to put in these ramps and they find a pipe there and or hit a pipe there, they stop everything while we fix it because that's pretty much it. It's not it.
We need to know because they'll, their contractor, that's what this, this is for. So what their contractor fixes, that should be paid for. That's essentially what it is.
Oh, great.
They're not gonna stop work and have us go in and try to fix it and then step back out and let them start working again.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. Sorry.
Yeah, but it makes sense.
Oh, that's good.
So what timeframe are we looking at, do you think, Gary?
They have, they have not given me a timeframe. I'm not at all. I saw somebody work it last week.
They've been doing survey, I mean, they've been surveying and potholing for about the last, I'm guessing, two weeks. But they still haven't gave us a definitive.
It's active time for this. Like, we have been on the list somewhere in probably the middle, right? Like they have other cities and they're doing activists. They've already done some cities. So it's the active time essentially for, yeah, the surveying and the identification of the conflicts and for them to get all of their, you know, design work done.
But it'll happen before this winter, right? Not necessarily.
It might be two.
The construction, yeah.
Yeah, this is all, this is all way, I mean, we're doing early prep work right now, early design. And, and the conflicts too could be something as simple as they have to level a, they, a valve can, you know, so the valves are where we turn the water on and off for the mains. Or if they have to adjust the angle of a bolt or a meter box. I mean, so the conflict sounds a lot of times worse than it really is.
What's happening right now is this, uh, gentleman, Gary Darling, is going out to every single property. And it can be a private property that he's been visiting too and doing the same, um, activity. So that's, this is their goal. So that he's been going into houses, people in Sheridan have invited their homes and they sit down and go through this paperwork together. So.
Okay.
That's where we are in the process.
Do we want to? To make this, to get this council feel comfortable, make it, well, Roxy.
I'm gonna make a motion. We approve the resolution twenty twenty four, yes. F to resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and sign a permanent easement on city property to ODOT.
Any discussion? Any more discussion? Great. I'll call for a vote and all in favor. Yes, okay. Okay, moving on. Um, unfinished business. We have, uh, approved city manager contract.
Really quick, he's going to want to decide that with you as soon as possible.
Who?
Gary Darling.
Oh, the, the, okay, yeah, okay. I think it's in the. Yeah, you, it was in, yeah, the front of your contract.
Oh, that's right.
Jim, um, didn't find a typo. On page six, paragraph. Page six, uh, the thirteen, definitely. Beyond that required on the federal state, the local law, city shall defend, save, harmless and indemnify a belt against any obligation to pay money or perform or no perform. No, I think that's supposed to be not. Am I right?
Uh, based on what you read out loud, Jim, yes.
And then, uh, the other one, the other thing that I, this is not a typo. This is the asking. On this Greek paragraph, as is, it's in the very front page, uh, section above. Acceptance may be provided otherwise by applicable charter provisions to the manager ordinance.
If, if we're gonna be discussing the negotiation now, we happen in executive session, not in committee session.
Is it like a typo type thing or is it just a question of?
It's an extra word. It's an extra word, uh, negotiation.
I guess it depends on the word.
Yes.
I'll just pass this over. If you can look at what I've got there. And if you accept a negotiation, then it's a negotiation.
Jim, you need to stop writing. Jim, okay, yeah, the, not a negotiation.
Okay.
So you can go ahead. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, here we go again. Acceptance may be provided otherwise by applicable charter provisions, city manager ordinance, personnel policies or city agreements with any other person. Bell may, shall have the authority to establish internal regulations, rules and procedures which Bell needs to serve for efficient and effective operation of the city. No problem with that. However, I think it should read that Bell should have the authority to establish written internal regulations, rules and procedures which Bell needs to serve for efficient and effective operation of the city so that everybody can know and not screw up.
Yeah. Written.
That's the only thing that looks like a typo. And I, I think that we're wrong for this. Not a, just a.
Okay. Any other things? Okay. Is there any more commotion?
I think the motion, we approve the city manager contract as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, first. We have a second.
I second.
Okay. First, okay, first and second. Any more discussion? Okay, all right. I'll call for a vote and all in favor. I think that's the end. Okay. Okay, moving on then. We have. New business, um, more bid for ADA improvements. So. Any questions on this? Let's see this up. Chris is here. Let's talk.
Three twenty six. Can I make a formal apology to everyone for the confusion? I've been out, like we've talked about, and there's just a lot of, there was some confusion. Diane did not write this memo. This is mine. We do have a template that we use. And so, you know, just got put on there and I got excited by the memo. Sorry, I do apologize for the confusion.
Jim, um, I have an observation, I guess. This is again, the secretary. And it says, I propose the council consider reallocating our funds to cover costs of the bridge, street, pedestrian project. And to address water line repairs, sewer line repairs and potential upgrades at the attributed Hebrew Memorial Plaza on Square Road. and to address waterline repairs, sewer line repairs and potential upgrades at the Hebrew Memorial Plaza on Sheridan Road. Okay, we all know the Hebrew Plaza is not on Sheridan Road, so I asked Heidi about this, let's see if I got it right, Heidi.
Yes.
Uh, okay, I'll start again, reallocating ARPA funds to cover the cost of the Bridge Street Pedestrian Project and to address the waterline repairs, sewer line repairs and potential upgrades on Sheridan Road and at the Hebrew Memorial Plaza, did I get that right?
Yes, water and sewer repairs should be Sheridan Road. Modifiers and runs up there. So just take an antec, to address the Sheridan Road waterline repairs and sewer line repairs.
Oh.
So take at Hebrew Memorial Plaza off. No, I still.
Put, put the potential upgrades at Hebrew Memorial Plaza after Sheridan Road, did I do?
Yes, that's perfect, okay.
So.
Got it.
You say Sheridan line, Sheridan Road repairs. Maybe I'm getting it mixed up, but are we repairing those water lines underneath, or are we running new lines?
Okay, sure. So the repair, waterline improvement and repair or explore up sizing and sewer line repair.
So I shared, um, I don't know, I, I shared a proposal with Heidi earlier, I don't know if I'm gonna share with everybody yet. I don't know if you think that's, this is a good time for it. So, we're talking about ARPA money here, um, and it's been kind of, I get earmarked for Sheridan Road surfacing. Uh, ARPA money will not cover the entire surfacing of Sheridan Road. So my, my proposal was to use the ARPA money for this project as well as the Hebrew Plaza. And then also use it to, um, fix roads that after we get this road report done, um, fix the roads that are deemed necessary to be safe, um, essentially. So nothing on Sheridan Road from this ARPA money. But to fund the Sheridan Road portion, um, because from the little, the few bids we've actually gotten on this project have been over budget. So even the, the water that we had budgeted for is, is over that, so I can assume that the street repaving is also gonna be over budget. So my proposal to fund Sheridan Road would then be to, uh, work with Business Org and then either get grants that fit um, the Sheridan Road project where there'd be water loans, sewer, or sewer, water grants, sewer grants, whatever. Um, or, um, getting grants from, I mean, loans from Business Org as well. And I talked to Arthur, who's with Business Org, and, you know, loans can be kinda scary, but they offer very low interest rate loans, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to do this project without, uh, some extra help, uh, because grants cannot cover everything. Heidi shared, it's very difficult to get grants specifically for road surfacing. Seems like people care about what's underneath and not what's on top. As well as the electrical undergrounding, which we've gotten a bid for two point five million to do the electrical undergrounding at, no grants. That's not a grant option. So, uh, that was, we don't have to vote on anything, that was just something I wanted to share, we definitely don't have to do that. But I think the ARPA money, it's money we have now, and I know we all, we all know how, you know, some of the conditions of some of our streets are. And I think that would be a good use of the funds that we could, especially after we get this road report, we would be able to actually fix all of our roads. But we can also hang on to it and put it towards Sheridan Road, um, but that was just, uh, an idea I had that, um, we'd be able to start using it now. Also, ARPA, the ARPA money will run out October of twenty twenty five, so if we don't use it before then, then we don't get any of it. And, um, uh, unless we have enough money for Sheridan Road, I don't know, uh, if we can start. So, that's another, another thing to think about. I don't know who was first, Jim, listen, Jim, we first, we.
It doesn't matter, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Jim. If we use the ARPA money for waterline repairs and sewer line repairs that gets carried road, correct?
Chris is on the phone to talk about the exact process.
Okay, Chris, uh, if we redo the water lines and the sewer lines, the road, some of the road has to be dug up, I'm guessing, is that correct? Chris, be.
Chris, you're breaking up, I don't know if it's us or you.
Try to get.
Sure.
Chris, maybe try taking your video off. Okay, give it a.
Wait, yeah, can you hear?
Yeah.
Sorry, we're not.
Okay. Be with replacement.
No, Chris, we can't hear you, is it us, do we have on?
I'll get out.
It's, our internet connection is unstable. It does for us, okay, Chris, hold on, we're gonna have to reconnect.
I just worked out that mic. From what I understand.
Hold on, Chris, I'll think, I.
What I understand, I think we're gonna resurface the whole road, so. That was part of the entire project.
May, maybe he talks now, cause Jim got off.
He usually just does this with announcements too. I'm gonna have to connect to something else.
Well, Heidi.
He could call me.
We do anything to call you?
Oh, that's.
Hey, try talking now.
Check, check, one, two, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You're sounding good.
Working well, okay. Uh, so the Sheridan Road waterline replacement includes trench patching, which is a typically a four inch, uh, AC or asphalt, uh, patch. It's about four feet wide, four to six feet wide, that would, um, go down over the top of the, uh, new water line. And that would be, those would branch off, those asphalt patches would branch off for the, uh, service lines to people's houses. And, um, the, each side street connection would, so every intersection, there'd be a asphalt patch in the shape of a T. And then, as you drag along, uh, every service line would have an asphalt patch going to its house. So that's included in the scope of the, uh, waterline replacement project.
But we're also talking about repaving the entire street, right? So then we wouldn't really need to patch those, right?
If you phased the project, we would recommend patching. If you did it all as one project, then yes, you could go and get away with, um, that not an interim patch.
So we could, okay, so we'd patch it and then we'd tear it up again? And we resurface it?
I, yes, pretty much. It would be, yeah, definitely a, a cost savings by not phasing it. You also, by keeping the project together, you cut down on mobilization costs of the contractor as well, which is a pretty huge proportion of the, uh, of the contract.
So in the long run, if we wanna redo Sheridan Road like we, um, you know, discussed, then I don't know if we've, I don't know, I think, I feel like we've committed to redoing the road, but if, um, if we wanted to do that, it would, it would make more sense and cost us less money in the long run to just do it all at once instead of patching.
Yeah, you would also, um, you would also encourage larger contractors, um, you get lo, lower, lower unit prices on, on asphalt. Um, larger contractors would mobilize further distances and be more competitive than larger the project.
So there's some big decisions.
Yeah.
Um, tonight, uh, the other thing is, I would, you know, there's been back and forth about what the Hebrew Memorial Plaza should look like with between the Waterfront Group that needs, which is a community group, wonderful group, and the, um, the engineers. And there's a person, Ernie Hebert, who has been, um, working for both teams, whatever, he's the communication liaison for all of this. And he's been, um, oh, I don't think both the engineers and the community group have established a hundred percent of what the plan should look like, but everybody agrees that the foundation needs to be done. And so I would really like the council to also consider using the ARPA money just to do the foundation at the very least of that. Um, the sooner the better, so if you like, I can start to engage that right away. And I think that would go a long way in the community as well, just to see that that's being repaired and worked on and gives us something all to have high hopes for.
We can also start engaging with Business Org and see what our options are.
For the plaza?
Uh, no, start first Sheridan Road, if we're talking about reverting ARPA money away from that project and using it elsewhere.
Sure.
Um, it might be a good idea to know what our options are for funding Sheridan Road, although ARPA was just one small piece of the funding. A big, small piece.
Let me say, one three million, that's.
One point three of the, like, ten.
Before we get too far from the Hebrew Memorial Plaza, SPC money, so system development charges for parks can be used on that. That will significantly limit the other things that, well, there's a lot of demand for park stuff right now. So that will limit, if you use, obviously, if you use it for one, you can't, there's less money in the pot. So, but I'd also like to say that it's actually more difficult to give back ARPA money, and it is actually more difficult the more we use it on small, little things, right? So that's initially why I want to advocate to use them on Sheridan Road, cause it's like one check. That is just a drop in the barrel, and so it's very easy to use it on large projects. At this point in time, we just really need to focus on spending and getting it done.
All right, we've got a couple, Jim, I'll start with you first.
No, you started with him first last time, you have to say that to anybody.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My question is, if we use all the ARPA funds for Sheridan Road, because we've told townspeople we're gonna repay Sheridan Road, people are expecting that, if we use all the ARPA funds for that, can we still apply for, fund, uh, a loan for the rest of it? And, and does, and ARPA funds, I hear you say you have to complete the project in order to use them? So is there any stipulation that you can't apply for a loan on top of using ARPA funds?
I guess the whole is to use them or to have them essentially a hundred percent dedicated towards a project. So we would have to be very far along in this whole thing. And I can research that more closely, but I haven't, this whole time, I thought we were gonna see the end of this through, so with a hundred percent. But we're getting to the point where it's gonna require me to, to look at, to look at what happens here.
So we have to have the project gonna be more than.
It is, it is easiest and the least amount of paperwork and federal government red tape, if the project is done. There, most likely, I believe in the back of my head, have, I have heard other communities that are working to, like, completely dedicate it, and I have not gone down that path because it's not in the best interest of my time. And at that point, I thought we would be writing a check for it to be in one bulk thing. But I can definitely learn about it if we need to go down that route. But I think that there's plenty of things in Sheridan that the council would like to just spend the money on now, and we can get it done.
Okay, but the thing.
That's why I bring this question back to you.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is, we take that money and we start dedicating money to Sheridan Road, because Main Street, Oregon, and those places that have grants, we can get for Hebrew Plaza for smaller projects. But this big project, we gotta start, and, and maybe we do have to go the long process and get it done. Otherwise, it's gonna keep costing more every year and, and go from ten million to fifteen.
The Hebrew Plaza, Chris, can you look it up, it's not cheap. Especially for all the renovations down at the waterfront too, and to give the documents.
But more people use Sheridan Road than they use the Hebrew Plaza.
What was that, Chris?
Uh, one second, I'll look, I'll look it up.
Okay, maybe the woman's tabaco's in the meantime, the mayor says that's okay.
All right, Jim. Um, it sounds like what you're recommending is the, no action while you research costs, is that kinda what you're meaning for it?
That's the route that I like, because I like to have like a grid and make a financial decision based on size.
The question I have for you is, we haven't really discussed it because the Bridge Street Pedestrian Project isn't the one that ODOT is doing. That's the one, the, uh, across from the IGA to the, what is it, the underbarred store there, correct?
And, and also, uh, subway to the Hyder Building. And that is why Chris is here, because he has done this work and done up for bid for this. And that's actually why Chris is here to present on pages three twenty eight and three twenty nine.
We've got a copy. Yeah, there's.
He is here to talk about this process, so you might wanna understand more about this before you start talking about, like, the memo too.
So we have documents. So, yeah, three.
Cause he gives you quite a few alternatives.
Three twenty eight, three thirty three. Chris, Chris, do you have that figure, are you still looking?
For the, uh, Hebrew Memorial Plaza, I did not, um, I wasn't ready to.
That's okay.
This time. Apologies.
No, you're okay.
I, I can talk about the, uh, the Bridge Street ADA improvements, if you would like.
Well, hold on one second, the mayor has like three minutes.
Yeah, one second, okay, Ian.
My question is on that portion, the portion that we're moving to, if you guys are still wanting to talk about something else.
I think, who do you have your hand up on about me?
I wanted to know about the bid alternatives, about something, I had maybe part of a mission on that.
Did you have a question about something like that, my proposal, or?
Well, I just wanna make sure that, in my mind, cause I do visuals pretty good. So if these water lines are redone, it would be a four to six foot wide gravel strip if they didn't refinish the road, is that correct? On one side of the road or the other? It's question number, I got three.
Either gravel or.
It would be paved. So it would just be, and if you did use the ARPA funds, what percentage of the road be done, it would be like three quarters of the road done and the others just crappy, or do you just go all the way up to like maybe Edison Street and then stop and the rest of it's crappy? That was my second question.
So it's all the water line and the sewer line?
But that should be torn up four to six feet, according to.
It gets patched.
But I mean, but he's got a care, that would be yet another rip in the street and it would be patched, so I guess another way to look at it would be at least kind of, it'd be a bicycle path, right? Or is it just gonna be like in gravel, like that's what they usually.
Some of the water lines are limited, where are the water lines?
Are they on the?
I don't know.
They're traveling or against.
Water lines are on the south side, really.
Next to the curb like you're talking about, or in the middle of the road, or?
Yes.
Which one?
The south side, like right in the gutter, there you go.
Okay, so it is on the south side of the road next to what would be the curb, and I couldn't even have them. And then it was not during this administration, but in a past one, I had a gentleman from ODOT, I think that he might be in the heart, but maybe not. And he said at one time, Sheridan Road was designated ODOT highway and ODOT takes care of their, they maintain their properties. So if, and back when Kai was here, we were talking about the width of the street, and they said, well, we need about five more feet, and I remember saying, well, why don't we eliminate the grass on both sides? And at one time, he goes, well, that would make the street wide enough to be a, and I might not be talking perfect little language, whatever, but it would make it a ODOT, it would take it back to what it was in the day before the bypass, cause that was the main way into Sheridan at that time.
So she's not a feeder street, is what they call it, a feeder street?
Well, ODOT managed it, so that's the big key point here, cause if it's like West Main Street, they can fix that street, but they won't fix Bridge Street, cause Bridge Street doesn't go into ODOT, so Main Street does go into ODOT, so ODOT takes care of Main Street.
She believes that Sheridan Road is an ODOT maintained.
At one time, it was an ODOT, and I believe that gentleman that came to this meeting even said that, I believe.
I think it's the mouth part off of the highway, so like where the RV park is up to like the marijuana shop, that area is, is still, um, ODOT.
But I mean, if it was once an ODOT maintained road, that's where I'm kinda going.
I don't, I don't believe Sheridan Road in its entirety was ever an ODOT maintained.
Well, before there was a bypass, that's how everybody came to town.
Right.
It's off Sheridan Road. It's off Sheriden Road.
But that doesn't make it a, an ODOT road.
Well, there was another burn beach that this guy, this guy used, and I don't, I think you can.
You gave me the.
I do know that.
You made me the contact.
Yeah, I know how to find him again. Maybe we can have that verified, if there was a way to.
Yeah, Tyler has done an ex- an extensive amount of research on the responsibilities and where it falls on Sheriden Road. That was one of his first, one of his first projects that he.
That is, I know.
It, it was.
But I was wondering, if we dug into that, maybe we could use that for a source of funds. Is what I'm looking for, a source of funds.
Yeah, I remember the question you gave me, but what Tyler's records show is different than that. So I can put Tyler to communicate with this guy, so that they can talk about that part of it, but that's definitely.
Well, maybe ODOT can make a little further, because it's ODOT's history versus just history that's been handed to us.
So, um.
I mean, it just could be something that could help out, I'm just trying to help out to somebody.
Yeah, of course.
And then asking questions too, because you're, sometimes you think the water being in the middle of the road, it's nice to know on the south side of the road. Just trying to keep the puzzle together, and the ARPA funds to fix that road to what degree? Because if it's not fixed all the way, then.
Well, it would be patched and then we tear it up again.
I, I don't like that, if, you know, that just seems like a waste of money.
Okay, uh, Rocky.
We have a lot of decisions to make. I think before we make a hasty decision to spend or not to spend ARPA money on Sheriden Road or not. I think as a council, we need to state, take a step back and reassess our needs and our goals. Have Heidi get some cost estimates on it. Um, water line repairs, sewer line repairs, water repairs. Um, we need to look at these bids for, um. The cross streets. That, um, then you're gonna look into on the next page. And look at all of these before we make up our minds what we wanna do with them. And I think it'd be better if we had this information in front of us and probably a workshop.
Be another work session next, next meeting, or?
I don't feel comfortable making a decision without having more information, and I'd like to have all of it. And, and everyone on the same page, on the same information, all at the same time.
And this could.
Try to make a.
This could be a standalone meeting, too. We have three meetings, whatever.
Although I, one thing I would like to consider though, is rebidding that.
The, oh, the ADA.
Um, I think it could come in, she could base on the information we were given. And then a thought, to go in with the thought.
There was only two bids, right?
I really think you guys should take the time to hear from Chris about the process and the alternative. They'll answer maybe some of Houston's questions, too.
Yeah, Ian, do you have a question first, or do you wanna hear Chris?
I would say Chris first.
Okay, okay, Chris.
All right, um, so, um, the Bridge Street ADA improvement, uh, bid opening was on July sixteenth. It was a rebid, um, from our first bidding that happened. Three or four weeks earlier, and we included, uh, the entire, uh, project scope. Including all bid alternatives as one contract. And bids came in over budget, and it was the, um, recommend, recommended, uh, path to, from staff to redo the project. And to restructure it with bid alternatives, so that the bid could be awarded, um, with alternatives. Um, that were initially requested, um, but not necessary, uh, to be removed. And so the bid price, um, of, low bid price of one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars includes the. Bridge and Monroe Street intersection on the east side of the road. It is a curb extension for ADA improvements in front of the. Oh, Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, the name of that, um, historic building there that's being remodeled.
The Hyder Building.
Hyder Building, um, which is, uh, currently in development. And their entrance, uh, currently doesn't need ADA. And so it was, uh, negotiation with the city staff and developer to, um, let's see, would improve footage. And, uh, create an ADA accessible entrance for that, that sidewalk there in front of the Hyder Building. And so that is part of the original con, uh, original bid, as well as the. Intersection of, um, Harney and Bridge across the street from the grocery store. Curb extension on the west side of the road for pedestrian safety that's been an area of concern. So that is the base bid, those, uh, there's three ADA ramps involved. All three of them are curb extensions for pedestrian safety and ADA improvements. And then the bid alternatives, which are in your packet, are the, one second. Um, they are stamped concrete for the, uh, areas, the non-traffic areas of the e- east side of Bridge and Monroe intersection. And that is bid alternative number one. Bid alternative number two is two bike racks that would also be placed in the curb extension in front of the Hyder Building. And then, uh, out of compliant, uh, ramps on the alternate corners of Monroe Street. On the south, north and south side of the intersection on the west side, which were also, um, removed from the, um, the full project. And as bid alternative, so the way we prepared it is the council can either not award the project and, um, request. Like you've been previously discussing, uh, of looking at your entire capital project, um, schedule. And doing a, um, getting costs with Heidi. Or, um, or awarding the base bid price of one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars to turn the excavation. And, or the third option would be, um, choosing, um, some of the bid alternatives to add on to that bid base price. If, if you wanna do it forward with the, with the project. So that's, uh. That's the, um, the proposed motions, and I'm available for any questions you might ask.
So, um, looking at these, I'm looking at these pictures, um. Which picture, cause I, I know that I see some are marked, you know, bid alternative four, bid alternative two. Is there one that's just, okay, so, okay, I see we choose one of those. So on, so this first one I'm looking at, bid alternative one, the first diagram. Um, the extended sidewalk, so can people park next to that sidewalk?
North and south of that, they can park, but they will be just a traffic lane through the intersection, which is.
So that, that jutted out part, or, or whatever the technical term is, so no one would be able to park there?
Yeah, there'd be, parking would be, um, not, not permitted there, but it also is in the middle of the intersection.
Oh, I see, I see what that. I got you. I'm gonna, I think, I might, I might be taking the wrong spot, but isn't there parking there now? Making of Monroe in front of the Hyder by, been a few weeks. I think there's parking there now, even though it is.
Chris, do you, let's give this a try, where you pull up essentially like a book of down, a, a map, a Google map or something. And I've got Gary up at the podium here.
What?
There, there, can you see my screen?
Yeah, I need to, that'll be helpful.
Two, two spots would be eliminated.
The, um.
I know, I know, further down, can you go down further? Uh, yeah, so right there where that truck is, um. I, I don't know if I'm, if I missed it or what, but is this, is this that sidewalk two?
Uh, yes, there, yes, it is this, uh, right in front of this county bargain side, uh, a curb, a sidewalk extension would go out. Um, so that pedestrians could approach, could venture out into the road without having to, um, step out into traffic. That's where the other, where the project.
So. So, so how far back does it go then, like to that white car, or is it part of where the black car is?
It is, it is pretty much, um, it's pretty much just in front of this crosswalk here, and, um.
Just that, just there?
Just right here, yeah.
So it's kind of, it's kind of like a bull bout then?
Yeah, and then at forty-five is back into the existing sidewalk.
Okay, so you, so you wouldn't really lose this spot there?
No, yeah, this one.
So, so the other side of the street then by the Hyder, so then is it, is it less expensive to do what you're proposing? Or can we do the same kind of little bull bout on both spots, so we don't lose the parking?
Um, there it went.
Go, go south. Yeah, that way. So like in that intersection, you know, bull bout, so then we keep those two spots and then bull bout again?
Um, so there'd be a curb extension, and then the sidewalk would go in, and then, um. And then it would go back out, um. It would be tricky, you, you would get, you might be able to get one spot, I think that spot might be, um.
Is it, oh, cause it would, yeah, it would come up there, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah. I thought we were gonna be losing. The several, yeah, I thought we were, I thought we were losing two.
Lose one. Well, that yellow line comes further going south, too.
I wanna.
Keep going south. It looks like there's another curb spot. I mean, it looks like that, that yellow line comes.
Complicate things just a little bit more. Chris, will you please discuss the issues that you've discovered with the storm drain water, too, please? So we can need to figure that out.
So there's a storm drain line on the, uh, going underneath the curb line here. Um, that we would be, we're just needing a, um, pretty much a catch point, uh, ca- uh, catch basin, uh, to the south of the crosswalk. For the, um, uh, for the curb extension going out into the road, maybe to, up to the travel lane. And then there would also be on the other intersection, on the other, um. Curb extension over on Harney Street, there would be a trench drain through the, uh, through the curb extension. That would drain, continuous drain, uh, northbound of that, um, along the curb line for, for the extension. So no, uh, storm drainage, uh, pipe work, um, involved here, but there would be, um, there is some.
Because essentially, we're gonna be adding some concrete in the area where the water normally runs down the street. And so you have to figure out how to mitigate to get the water to go around that. Or you could do like what he's talking about with the trench. And so then you'll have like these open lattice looking things essentially, that you've probably seen places. I think there's a picture in your book there. Um, but, you know, that's one of the things when you add concrete or you add a different shape than what water normally travels. You have to think about how you're gonna handle that. That's a part I want you to be aware of as you're picking, as you're making a choice.
Okay, uh, any questions from council right now? Everybody feel better, we, uh, we're allowed to delay a vote. We have more time to think about this. But Ian, go ahead.
I believe Roxanne's first.
Okay, Roxanne.
I, I get all the stamped concrete, it looks nice and everything. Uh, I think our number one concern here is safety. Um, and still retaining parking, because we have so little that. To me, those are the two most important things here, safety and parking. I know I want it to look nice too, but I don't think we need, um, all this stamped concrete and losing parking places. I would rather see just a bigger bull bout and being able to work with the catch basins and drainage. Like we do on West Main along that sidewalk, if that is possible.
I think that that's what he's talking about, though, is that the more pipe work we add, the more expensive it gets. So instead of just like trench, like having like an open, how do I say?
Above ground, you may understand.
So like leave it where it is essentially, where the curb is, and then just add the bull bout here. And so then the water's still draining here, you're just adding like a grate over the top of that.
Yeah, it has like a grate where the curb would be the face of the curb.
But no catch basin.
But no catch basin.
Because the catch basin is when you get storm water. Um, the storm water just goes down, right, Chris? Goes down to the corner, there's a, there's a catch basin. But this would be like a mid-street catch basin that would be made essentially on the north side of this bull bout, just to move the water to this other side. Yes, and so we're trying to avoid as much pipe work as possible. Does that make, do I?
Also, um, to kind of re, go into the, the parking situation. To put two pedestrian crosswalks with this curb extension at Monroe. And then have one spot available in between, also in the middle of the intersection. Um, would be recommended to be, to be tight, and it'd also be kind of a, a conflict with, uh, factor control, uh, to the intersection. So right now, it's, it's easy, um, because you can just pull right up into it. But to have a dedicated spot between two ramps, um, would be recommended.
I feel like people will still park there, though. They're used to. Right there, in the travel lane.
Could be a bike racks.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, okay, I got you.
Do people feel like they, I think, Councilor Houston.
Go ahead, Ian.
I have a couple, a couple of questions. My first one would be, these bid alternatives are listed here. Uh, but what is the not, what just seems to be not listed here at all? Because I think, uh, I believe we're on page three twenty-nine here, uh, in the continued pages, the diagrams there. Um, I guess, so my question would be, it says, for instance, uh, I understand that like bid one and bid two would be just to not have that. However, bid, uh, three and four, uh, are for, what's, what is the addition? Is it the ADA ramp? Is that the alternative that we're voting on here?
Are you asking what the bare minimum is?
Yeah, what, cause I don't understand what, what we're changing from.
Okay, is that the base?
These are the base prices.
He's asking, what does he get for the base?
What do we get?
Oh, okay.
See, I'm doing a good job.
I can share my, I can share my screen, yeah, my apologies, I, I didn't need to get the bid alternatives in the, uh, in the memo without the base bid. My apologies on that, I mean, I can share my screen again, uh, with you and show you the, uh, proposed, um, curb extension at Harney Street. On the west, on the west side, northwest side of the intersection. Um, with a continental crosswalk, instead of a standard crosswalk there, since it's a two-street and a stopping. Um, not a, uh, stop controlled intersection. That is one of the, this is part of the base bid. And then the, um, the other base bid is the curb extension at Monroe and, um. Monroe and Bridge Street on the east side of the road without the stamped concrete. So that, it would still be concrete in the base bid, but it would just be flat brush finish, um, scattered sidewalk. Uh, through there without the, um, without the bike racks. And the ramp. And the ramps on the other two intersections would also not be included as well.
Okay, so, so bid three and four would be adding an ADA curb ramp. And bid one and two is just kind of an added, um, options, I suppose. I mean, I guess they're all added options, but I, I look at stamped concrete and bike racks as a little different than the ADA ramps.
Yeah, the, yeah, the reason they want to base this is those, uh, because of the, uh, uh, the coordinated development with the, uh, developer. Trying to, uh, create an ADA accessible entrance for their, uh, property. And the, uh, the intersection a lot, um, at the Harney Street, which is to increase pedestrian safety so that crossing there is finished.
You talking about ADA access to the Hyder building?
Yes, currently the Hyder building is at an elevation, uh, that is, um, higher than, uh, a little bit higher than the sidewalk. And also, if you see the ramps currently, uh, go all the way into the, um, it's the cross slope of the ramp goes all the way into the building, which makes you.
Oh, it's cut out here. Well, I was gonna say, um, I mean, the only, the owner of the Hyders selling it, but I mean, this would still fix that issue.
Yeah, I mean, regardless, it's a downtown of a city.
Yeah.
And we are trying to make it look good and have people wanna.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, um, good, Ian and Roxie, the other hands up.
I, my second question is for the, uh, art funds. What was the total amount of the art funds or they were allocated to the Sheridan Road project? And, uh, if, if we, uh, I guess I answered that part.
One point three million, the whole thing.
Oh, okay, one point three million? Okay.
And like two hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Then my second question would be, we have to spend the rest of that money then if we're not using it on Sheridan Road?
We just have to spend, we just have to spend all of it before October twenty-five. Regardless on Sheridan Road.
If we're being very technical, I believe that you just have to have it like completely dedicated, like have a contractor picked out. But like I said, I haven't paid attention to that piece of it because I've always thought that it would be forever along. I'm happy to go and learn that, but from my baseline understanding, it has to be like, like you've picked the contractor to do the thing. And they'll work it, yes. So you have to be really far along, not like, hey, we're gonna spend it on Sheridan Road one day when we get all the money. It's not that way, it's like, this person's doing it, yeah.
All right, Ian.
The last thing I would say, say is that we have to respectfully disagree with Roxie about the stamped. I think that the, that we're trying to attract businesses to Sheridan. And, and really revitalize our downtown and try to make it a place where people wanna go. And stamped concrete is not necessary, but it is very nice and it would improve the look of our town. So I, I like that idea personally, that's all.
So, Roxie.
Um, I wanted to, Chris, is that his name?
Yeah, yep.
Um, asking, what was the initial engineer cost estimates for this project?
Um, one second, let me get up. It did go up slightly due to the, um, it did go up slightly in the rebid when we removed the, uh, the bid, removed bid alternatives from the project. Um, our bid alternative cost estimates were close to the initial project, but no mobilization. Uh, we ended up quite a bit in the, uh, base bid due to us defining the project due to bid alternatives. In order to meet budgetary constraints. So our original engineer's, uh, estimate was seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirty. And a little bit came in at, um, one hundred and five thousand. So we were, um, a little bit under. We also, it's, um, this is a kind of a later bid. Uh, typically, um, we give the best bids around February, March. Um, when contractors are scheduling after summer, so bidding in July isn't optimal. Um, but you know, it's kind of, kind of, if projects, um, completed, so, um, this is maybe a bit. Does that answer your question?
Well, does that mean if we were to award it to Turney Asciating, would that include all four alternatives? Or would that be in addition to?
Uh, the way we've structured the, kind of the motion is you can choose which, uh, alternative you would like. Uh, right now, you can award the one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And that would just be, that'd be without any of those add-ons. And to just give you a little, you know, we, we, our engineers' estimates for both, uh, bid alternatives of each ramp. Uh, came in at seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-five and seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty for those two ramps. So, uh, we were over on our engineer's estimate for the two ramps, but our base bid we were, um, under. Due to the higher mobilization.
So each bid alternative would just add that dollar to the one hundred and five, yeah?
They're all adds, yeah.
Yeah, this is a menu that's like, and I couldn't get that information. I can't remember, Chris, if they were to get all of them, all, all four alternatives, is Turney still the lowest, or Turney still the lowest? When you add it all up, it is, right?
There, Turney is definitely the lowest due to bid alternatives, uh, three and four.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, it's pretty much.
I just heard that.
Okay. Okay, Lucy.
So, Chris, you were saying if the bids were done in March, they might be less money. Because obviously they're kind of, it's their school season versus having somebody do something during the summer is always more expensive.
Uh, yes, yes, Mary.
And the other thing is although I can appreciate hand-stamped concrete, I would like even better than Hand Street. Hand-stamped concrete, I would like to see the helpful lines on Bridge Street buried. So if you're gonna spend a lot of money fixing it up, you're just gonna end up tearing it up if that day comes that we wanna bury those lines, which I think are horrible on Bridge Street. So that's something else that, you know, you really wanna spend that much, kind of like, you know, making a new subdivision, the first thing you do, the gas company comes in and tears the street up. And you think, I wanted to just do that all at the same time. Just something to think about. Because, you know, I see those lines every day and, and I know you've noticed it because you mentioned it. And they look horrible. You wanna clean up the downtown, that just looks really bad, I think. But it would take time to do that. And I know Sheridan Road's our big project, but if you're looking down, down the road. You know, with that Hyder bid or all, Hyder building all cleaned up and facilitated, then that is gonna come into play.
Uh, Chris, do you know, can we keep a sidewalk if we tear up the road?
Um, no, unfortunately, if you tear up the road, it, that's where you get into the, uh, uh, law that got, um, got into where you need to update the pedestrian facilities as well.
Okay, but if, okay.
You could probably do those two blocks for all of our, underground, um, have new curbs, have new sidewalks, have this whole thing.
And then there's the Hyder.
That's one you support.
I just like, it was like we're having a big conversation.
Well, that's all right because that's the fact that the Hyder building also.
Just so everybody knows, I have to leave at ten thirty.
Okay, so.
I have to leave at ten thirty. Maybe just something to think about.
Yeah, okay, so what do we, what do we wanna do with this then? Do we wanna award it or do we wanna postpone? I think, uh, doesn't hurt to wait unless we have to award a bid right now. I don't think we have to. I think we can postpone it. Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, I believe you can, you can probably postpone another month.
Okay, good. Is that something everyone's covered with? Andy, you got your hand up?
I was ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion to postpone this, uh, vote until the next.
Later.
Later.
Okay.
With that comes that the council wants me to work with the engineers to put together like a menu of all the things that are out there, right?
I, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until later with the direction to, uh, this city manager to, uh, per- pursue other avenues for this project.
Or just do a comprehensive cost analysis and funding options for Sheridan Road, this Bridge Street pedestrian project, and the Hubert Memorial Plaza. Put all that together.
Can you just say stop?
No. Were you reading that off of something?
I was reading that off of my options that I gave, so that's my.
I would like to amend my motion. Uh, to postpone this till later, uh, with the direction to the city manager to consider requesting that the engineers, uh, uh, to direct the city manager to prepare a comprehensive cost analysis and funding options for the Sheridan Road project. Bridge Street pedestrian project and the Hubert Memorial Plaza.
Second. All right, first and second, any discussion on that?
Yeah, does that include checking with ODOT about that Sheridan Road at one time being a collector's tree?
Yes, I got my note here for you to pass that over to.
Okay, yes.
And does that include looking into more bids?
That would be rebidding, so no.
Okay.
Not, but depending on the information we get, then we can make that decision. Ian, do you have another?
Uh, yeah, I would, uh, like to see, uh, and I know that Lucy and Roxie might not like this, but. What, is there a possibility that, that we could also look into maybe even doing, uh, something special in these locations about our city? For instance, uh, Portland, the city of Portland, the stamps roses on their sewer mammal covers and storm sewer covers. Is there a possibility that we could put something in the, on the, on the concrete like, uh, I don't know, a logo? Something that, that would be, uh, that would be beautiful, yes.
That could be part of her, her, uh.
Maybe we could look into it at least.
Yeah, that can be part of her, um, what cost estimate or whatever, comprehensive cost analysis. That, yeah.
There is a Sheridan Art Group that hasn't been for a little while, maybe they could kind of think about that too.
So yeah, so that can be part of it. Okay. So, first and second, any other? Okay, all right, are we ready to vote? Get all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, okay. Now let's move on to the yellow seat. So did everybody give Yvonne their vote?
I'm missing, um, councillor Houston and councillor Keith.
I have questions real quick about what I'm looking at.
We can also postpone this for next week.
I were gonna have such a long.
Because we have until September twenty-fifth to get these votes in. September twenty-seventh, so we can also do that, especially because it's, you know, it's like, Ian, did you have a question?
Um, I'm not sure what these are here, because they don't all necessarily correspond. I'm sorry, I'm looking at page one, uh, so pre-thirty-five.
Which one?
Pre-thirty-five. Um, there's nothing on here to correspond with the previous session's agenda. For that portion where we numbered them and the words are different. So I'm a little bit confused as to which ones are which.
Do you get the, do you still have the LOC packet?
I do.
Is that what you're looking at?
I'm trying to, all right.
This, I have one right here if I'm looking at it.
Yes, that is it. The water, the wastewater committee, um, section at the bottom. Okay, so we did, uh, not include the infrastructure funding.
That's on the top.
Got it.
That was the one that was the twice.
Then, yes, I'm done.
Okay, do you wanna tell me yours?
I only have four.
Okay.
I'll take one, I'll take one, I'll take one.
Wait, so which one, sorry, which one?
I said, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, see, then you give one, two, but I just chose one.
You can vote, you can put all five of your votes on the whole thing if you want.
Yeah, we decided.
We can also just focus on getting through this because it's.
Structure?
Thanks, Yvonne, alcohol.
No, I don't. And I need to kind of do like Ian except personal, so if you wanted to postpone it, then I could ask questions too. I didn't have a chance to do that.
They're very fine with briefly discussing this.
Do you wanna know where you're at so far?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe I'll eliminate some more. All right, here is where you're at. So the infrastructure funding, you have seven votes for that. Employment lands readiness, three. Full funding and alignment, one. Behavioral health, one. Um, address, uh, energy affordability, three. Marijuana tax, two. Alcohol tax, one. Uh, resilient broad, future-proof broadband, one. Um, the twenty-twenty-five transportation, two. And your shift from a gas tax to road user fee, two. And your apprenticeship is one. Oh, excuse me, two, two.
So you have zero funding for expanding public? Under transportation? Is that what you're saying?
What number was that?
Yeah, there's not a thing in expanding public, inter- community transit, zero votes for that.
Zero.
And there's also zero votes at someone for the Energy and Environment Committee, uh, investment in community resources. So probably you could strike those.
Okay. What was the first one? Employment lands readiness?
But you already voted, so.
No, I'm just curious what one was. So we're eliminating, um, X I.
But until we have everybody's vote, we don't know that those are the lowest. Lucy can put all five of her votes at something.
This is true.
So, add that, number six was what, Yvonne, was that zero two? I didn't hear you say that.
Number six was, there was nothing, right?
Okay, I'm just trying to fill in all the blanks.
No, that's, excuse me, number six. Roman numerals are killing here. Number six, address energy or ability is three. So you can, you can add, you, you can add two votes on one. Did you?
Can I share what I voted for and why?
Uh, sure. Go ahead. Why, why F and A? Go ahead.
Um, infrastructure funding, um, boy, we need help with our infrastructure as much as anything. I, I think the number of votes, uh, show that. Everyone else kind of thinks the same way. Um, I voted for employment lands readiness and availability. That will help us get our, um, industrial lands, uh, ready for people to buy. We will get help with our infrastructure and that will help with our economic growth in the area. So we're, we're infrastructure and economic growth, um, transportation package, um. We already know where our master plan is on, that is on that, so we really need to help with that. Um, I think of, we've got three that are in revenue income producing issues. I think we should vote for at least one of those. Um, in my opinion, the shift to a gas tax for a road. From a gas tax to a road user fee would get us more money than the other two. More people drive than the others, but maybe they do both, but. My opinion, we need to consider one revenue increasing issue and, um, I think the last one I have is operator and training. I think that's something that's gonna be overlooked and there are not enough operators in the state of Oregon to do the job they do. We need a. We need a.
For water.
So that's, that's my reason for why I voted for mine, so thank you for giving me the time.
Okay, so I think everybody handed them in, Lucy, do you want to hand them in next meeting for yours?
Yeah, I'll hand it in next meeting.
All right, we'll talk about this next meeting. Or the next meeting, yeah, yeah, we'll see where we're at.
Maybe I'll just give a few of them, actually, and then you can do your final read out, how's that, that's still still beautiful.
Yeah. Okay, next goes the city manager, oh, sorry, Ian, go ahead.
Are you gonna make a motion to postpone this or?
Okay, um next city manager report, um Eddie, do you wanna be, how how detailed?
If there's anything here that anybody wants to talk to me about, please say something.
Yeah.
Um it sounds like, reading your statement here, that you're concerned about staff morale, is that is that correct?
I guess not necessarily concerned, I just don't know that everybody. I just want everybody to know that how hard they work, there's a lot of people who work really hard that live in the community or live nearby. And they give their heart and their soul to work, they love being public servants, and so that's all, I just wanted to acknowledge how hard the staff works.
I agree with that.
Yeah. I can sit down sometimes and let everybody know how much I appreciate working with them.
If any other.
Thanks for asking.
Questions or any, right? Okay, well, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we have the second comment period, Yvonne, did you get anything?
I do not.
Okay, great, uh next mayor council comments, anybody have any?
Of course I do, um so there's a couple of things that have been said to me by residents. One is, I had a resident talking to me about South Side Park, and they're all for it. But their concern is, what are we gonna do about pedestrians and bikers going across the bridge? Particularly young people that wanna go to the park, once all those activities are in place, there will be more traffic in that direction. So Heidi, this is kind of directed at you, um or maybe even Commissioner Johnson. Can we get fencing up on the bridge so it's safe?
ODOT owned and maintained, so they need to direct all of their comments to ODOT.
So if we wanted to get, have it safer, like residents could start, we should all start campaigning for that? Okay, because that's really necessary, I agree with this person's comment that.
Regardless, if there's more and more bikes, I don't know if anybody else has walked over there, but I would cut it.
It's a very narrow space to walk, it's good, it's your bracket, I don't mind.
I'm trying to, sorry, I don't mean to be brief, but I really have to leave at ten thirty, so um.
Okay, call it out, and then the other one, the other comment that came up. And this was um from someone whose family farm, they have a family farm out Harmony Road. And they were interested in starting a solar farm, and they said when they looked into it, they were told they were too far away from a substation. So I'm wondering if this woman that gave us the presentation, what is the distance between a substation and a solar farm? And is she too far away from the substation for us to pursue this?
That is a question I would say for either the Oregon Department of Energy or Portland or PGE. Okay, it's not a question that we have anybody on the staff.
Find out from her, right, yeah, she's gotta know.
She should look it up because they found out when they looked into it that they were too far away from the substations. And then um this is something that keeps coming up, I need, sorry, but. When are we gonna change over the recording on this, on when you cost me?
Now that Yvonne and I are back in the office, we can work on that.
Okay.
But it is not an easy task, so we have to actually have Land Hill come out and do it. So that'll be a.
Cause it says it goes to DSHA and.
All of it is wrong.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, I'm done.
All right, just a couple, uh I don't know if I need to make a motion, I've been approached. Some people would like the council to uh review the spending limits of the city manager and public works. I don't know, maybe a motion to put that on an agenda or if you just do it, I think we could just do it, okay. Yeah, another one was, I was approached about term limits, it's something I really need to discuss.
About term limits?
Term limits.
Term.
Term limits, term limits, so that's all I got.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got six, but I'll limit it down to one. And that is when I went to the Yamhill County Dinner, which you went to, and you went to, I was very impressed with Yamhill. And how they really support the community, I'm not gonna talk about Nebraska, but I will talk about the fact that they looked into their history. And they found that woman who wrote books, and then they orchestrated their town with a very nice theme around this woman, I don't.
That really clear.
She's, she's a reader, and anyway, they used murals to depict this history. And I was thinking, when you're talking about the stamp for the mammoth and our art committee that hasn't met. And just kind of a, a thing we should maybe ask um the museum or some of the older people, if there's anybody in an art area that has some kind of. You know, I kind of was thinking of of Wally Hyder, cause you know, I've met him and stuff when he was doing his thing, but we gotta, we could maybe go deeper than that. Like this woman, like the eighteen, late eighteen hundreds, wasn't she, she was part of Yamhill, anyway.
Early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, so look somewhere, we were to look like that and look for somebody, look for a few different alternatives. And maybe use that to correspond, not only that, but our location too for our thing. If you start thinking of, maybe we come up to Southern mixture. I don't hear you, doesn't happen overnight.
That's because we also have this real little late um, can you pass that over to Heather?
Okay.
The thing people for cleaning the cycle station.
Oh, I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah, one second, all right, Ian, sorry, go ahead.
Um out of the concerns and comments that I take from both of you around the city and Yvonne, uh. One of, one common complaint is uh poor communication from City Hall to that. Uh that's common through, I'd say, more than ninety percent of of complaints, so maybe we could uh work on on that somehow.
Is that like from like, when they call in or like, like what, what, what way?
Uh for instance, the woman that uh gave the comment period early earlier, Tara Summers, she said that she had tried to contact the city. And I did write down the date. But that, there was no response from city code enforcement, so there's a variety of. Of uh departments, I guess, that are not responding, um had uh people say the same about our planning department as well, sorry.
Has it been like recently or has it been like, or did they say like one way or the other?
Most of these are, most of these are within the last, I don't know, five years, go back to the tops, so.
Hey Jim, um what he said, uh I've heard that too a lot, people say, call City Hall and they couldn't tell me anything, well, who'd you talk to, I don't know. So people need to, when they answer phone, say who they are. That way the person calling in, go, okay, I talked to Yvonne, or I talked to Heidi, whatever, but they'll know. And the other question I have is, are the houses across the street from uh City Hall gonna be on the agenda next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Good, so I got.
Anything else? Danny. Okay, they're all all in favor, go vote for it, I think that's gonna ask. Is, right, kid, ten twenty, we're done.
Lucy, I called that couple and they didn't, they never called me back about it.
Recording stopped.